I would like to call tonight's meeting of the City of Tacoma Park City Council to order where the clerk please call the roll.
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Fulcher.
Present.
Councilmember Dibala.
I'm here.
Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Hansak.
Present.
Councilmember Small.
Yes, yes, and you don't stop.
Well, thank you all so much for being with us tonight. I'm going to do a quick run-through of our agenda because we have a lot of things that we're going through over the next couple of days, or next couple of meetings, I should say. So for tonight, we have two proclamations. One is in honor of Pollinator Week, and the second is a proclamation recognizing emergency manager Ron Hardy. We will have, there he is, yeah, there we have, we will have public comments on voting items as well as general public comments. Just as a reminder for folks, the voting items for tonight are, is the second reading ordinance approving the FY 2024 budget amendment number four, the single reading ordinance approving procurement of three police vehicles, resolution authorizing a submittal of FY 25 National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund, or NED, grant applications, and then a single reading ordinance authorizing the use of NED grant funds to assist with the tenant purchase of 7520 Maple Avenue. For tonight, we have a couple of, we have a presentation, and that will be the first item this evening, on the results of Laurel Avenue Traffic Study. And then we will have two work sessions, the Emergency Operations Plan and the Administrative Regulation Regarding the Use of Certain Public Facilities. In terms of upcoming agenda items, on Sunday, June the 16th, is Father's Day. Want to acknowledge all of the fathers in the city. On Wednesday, June the 19th, June the 19th is, June 18th, city offices and facilities are closed for the June 18th holiday, and therefore on Wednesday, June the 19th, the city council will not meet. On Sunday, June the 23rd, and Wednesday, June the 26th, is the Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference. And so on Wednesday, June the 26th, the city council will not meet because many of us will be at that conference. On Monday, July the 1st, we're going to meet on a Monday instead of a Wednesday because we've had a couple back-to-back holiday or conference Wednesdays. We will have our regular meeting on the 1st of July, and that's a Monday. It will start with a Grant Review Committee Recommendations Presentation, and then we have a slew of items to vote on. So the first reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code Title 14 Health and Safety to add Chapter 1401 Non-Stormwater Discharge, first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code to remove provisions referring to the repeal Law Enforcement Officers' Bill of Rights and references to Maryland's Police Accountability Act, the first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code Title 7 Purchasing and Taxation, Chapter 7.04, general provisions, Chapter 7.08, so source selection and contract formation to address software and information technology-related contracts, that's a mouthful. We have a tentative item, the first reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 5, Chapter 5.18, mail-in ballot voting, and Chapter 5.12, fair election practices, a resolution adopting an Emergency Operations Plan, and we're also tentatively slated for a resolution providing for reappointments to the commission on the Landlord Tenant Affairs Commission. And then we have two work session items. The first is housing policy, it's a housing policy discussion, and then the second is board and committee appointment recommendations. And just as a reminder, on Wednesday, July the 3rd, the council meeting was rescheduled to July the 1st, because on Thursday, July the 4th, is Independence Day, and city offices and facilities are closed for the Independence Day holiday. So with that, we're going to turn things over to talk through our proclamations for tonight. So our first proclamation is recognizing National Pollinator Week, which is June the 17th through the 23rd, 2024. Whereas pollinator species, including birds and insects, are significant components of Tacoma Park's natural heritage resources, providing an essential and irreplaceable pollination process to maintain healthy, biodiverse, and resilient natural habitats and communities. And whereas pollinator species such as birds and insects are essential partners of farmers and ranchers in producing much of our food supply. And whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, biodiverse ecosystems. And whereas the City of Tacoma Park has managed wildlife habitats and public properties such as parks, open spaces, and cultivated plantings to promote the protection of pollinators for decades. And whereas the City of Tacoma Park is in the process of developing the Stewart Armstrong Pollinator Arboretum specifically to promote pollinator habitat and education. Now therefore I, Talisha Circe, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, who do hereby proclaim the week of June 17 through 23rd of 2024 as Pollinator Week in the City of Tacoma Park. And our next proclamation we have is recognizing Ron Hardy in the occasion of his retirement. Whereas Ron Hardy joined the City of Tacoma Park as the Emergency Preparedness Manager in 2013. And whereas in the role of Emergency Preparedness Manager, Ron's work touched every city department as he conducted trainings and ensured that the staff and city council were trained and prepared for emergency situations. And whereas Ron has served as staff liaison to the council-appointed Emergency Preparedness Committee, where he worked directly with residents appointed to advise the city council on preparedness and conduct community outreach informing residents about how to prepare for emergencies. And whereas Ron has been the public face of preparedness during his tenure in Tacoma Park, tabling at the Folk Festival, the Street Festival, and other events in the city, often in coordination with the Emergency Preparedness Committee, the Police Department, and the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department. And whereas Ron worked with managers of large apartment buildings to engage those residents on emergency preparedness and invited other departments to join him or to send information to him for distribution. And whereas Ron organized and participated in public trainings on the use of Narcan for overdoses and Stop the Bleed. He organized prescription drug, drug take-back programs for the Police Department, arranged for blood drives in the community center, and played a role in the Community Police Academy, the community public safety meetings, and numerous other meetings, events, and programs over the years. And whereas Ron is retiring on June 30th, 2024. Now therefore I, Talisha Circe, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the city council, residents, and staff, hereby proclaim our appreciation for Ron Hardy's service to the City of Tacoma Park and its residents, and we wish him the very best on his retirement. (APPLAUSE). Well, we're going to deviate from our regularly scheduled programming to allow for people to come up to the dais, to, to come up to the mic to just say a few words in honor of you, Ron.
Am I allowed to make a motion?
No.
That's why they did it to you this way, so you couldn't, you couldn't stop it.
Exactly, exactly. There you go.
For those of you who do not know who I am, I am Kathy Plevy, the Police Public Information Manager for the Tacoma Park Police Department, and thank you for allowing me to speak about Ron Hardy. He's not only been a colleague of mine, but also a cornerstone of our workplace and has many talents. Having Ron as a coworker is like having a Swiss Army knife in your, in your pocket because he's handy in any situation. He can literally talk a copy machine into coming back to life. We've shared work events together. We joke a lot that he's my work husband because he does everything that I tell him to do, when I tell him to do it, and it's always perfect. He co-hosts every drive, every event, and he even talks me off the ledge a lot of days when I don't know if things are going well. He has a talent for working with every division, not just the Police Department. He has an incredible ability to keep everyone on track and prepared for emergencies. If emergency management were an Olympic sport, he would have a lot of gold medals. He ensures our ship sails smoothly, even when our waters are choppy and the crew is not in sync, and by the crew, I mean me. So having a proclamation for Ron, we appreciate it. Remember, it's not just acknowledging a coworker, but honoring a mentor, a problem solver, a team player, and my work husband. And it's not just a piece of paper, Ron, it's, it's a testament to the countless ways you've made our workplace better, more manageable, safer place to be, so you richly deserve it. You've done a lot for all of us. You've done it with a smile, some jokes I didn't understand, and a heart of gold. Thank you for allowing me to talk, council members, and for Ron being the incredible person that you are. I'm going to miss you a lot. Happy retirement. I'm going to call you a lot.
Thank you, council, for allowing me this moment to recognize Ron Hardy. I'm Donna Wright, the Director of Communications for the City of Tacoma Park, and I've worked with Ron Hardy for over five years. He was one of the first staff members to welcome me to the city. I have found his knowledge, creativity, and support of his programs to be priceless. One of the reasons the city had such a great response to the US Census was in part due to Ron's help. Ron introduced me to all the property managers and assistants in the multifamily dwellings throughout the city so that we could share how important the census campaign and funding was to all of our residents in the community. We've made several plans to hold in-person events at each of the multifamilies when COVID struck. Ron and I pivoted, and when the census resume, resumed, we went walking around the city to speak with residents. Ron and I developed the same game plan with the Direct Cash Assistance Program, spreading help and resources from Ron, the Emergency Preparedness Manager who all the residents and community trust. Ron has always served as coworkers in the same fashion. He is very caring and passionate about people in a very quiet way. When you need assistance or have a question, Ron is never far away. I for one will miss him very much, and I wish him all the best in the next chapter of his life. Thank you for your time.
I am Trey Dwyer, here, Avenue, Ward 1. I've lived in Tacoma Park for my entire life. Thank you, Mayor and council, for allowing me a chance to speak. I want to express my appreciation for Ron Hardy's years of service to Tacoma Park as the Emergency Preparedness Manager. Thank you for making the plans that keep us safe. I specifically appreciate the times you worked at the Tacoma Park National Night Out. I most specifically appreciate last year's National Night Out, August 1st, 2023, when I sunk him in the dunk tank. Thank you, Mr. Hardy.
And thank you for putting them in the dunk tank. Good man. What can I say good about Ron Hardy? Well, that's about it. Thank you, guys. I'll see y'all later. It's no secret, we're good friends, and I've worked together for years on Emergency Preparedness Committee, folk festivals, street festivals, National Night Out, Stop the Bleed training, the list goes on and on, and I will miss Ron big time. And it's been a really, it's been a great time. It has been incredible. I can't, I just, in a conversation last night, Kathy Plevy said it best, sorry I stole your line, Ron Hardy has your back. I can't say it any better because Ron Hardy does have your back and everyone else's. Ron will always go that extra mile and then some to help someone solve a problem. So many times, he is personally taking care of a situation to make sure that situation is solved. For example, using his unique skills to solve that situation could have benefited Tacoma Park resident, any number of safety classes he teaches, and a program to provide winter coats to those who need them. In other words, if I listed all of the programs, safety activities, outside festivals, presentations and classes over the years, it would take a very long time, and as you can see, a very, very long list. Damn, that's the wrong list. Anyway, thank you, Ron, for all you've done over the years for city residents, city staff, and city organizations. It has really been a great time working with you, and thank you for your support of me personally. And to the city council and mayor, thank you so much for this proclamation. Really appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Jim Della Giacca, Ward 2. I stand here tonight to thank Ron Hardy in three capacities. Firstly, as the, in a personal capacity, but as Secretary of the Emergency Preparedness Committee, also as a member of the Chief's Advisory Board, and finally as the editor of the Long Branch Sluggo Community Association Newsletter. Firstly, as the wrangler of the cats, the herder of the sheep of, of the Emergency Preparedness Committee, Ron has really been a force of discipline and organization for the committee. He's helped us put our ideas into practice in, in very practical ways by knowing how the city council works, including the Emergency Preparedness Fringe Magnet, that's version one, and when there wasn't any money, he helped us do version two, which is sponsored by our local realtor. And I think Ron embracing these ideas and working with the committee to come up with agreed text was much appreciated. You know, I think he's motivated us to do PSAs, he's got us out at tables where we meet the community and, and spread the message about preparedness, and he's really educated us on what it really means to be prepared, and in a way that sort of feeds back into my work and my professional life as well. So thank you, Ron. In, as a member of the Chief's Advisory Board, Ron is always there in the background. If the pizza is late, Ron will make it happen. Ron is always there at the, the public meetings. He's very much a sort of a quiet presence, but as Kathy said, he's the one who's the Mr. Fix-It of, of these things and makes things happen, and we, for that, we appreciate it. I think in, in that capacity, you know, he's training. I've taken Stop the Bleed training, I've taken the Narcan training, I've taken the Chief, so the Community Police Academy, which is co-organized with Kathy. Ron drives the bus, which you approved, thank you very much, council members, because we all thought the old one was about to fall apart, and it's great that it can be driven by anyone with a standard license. So I, I think that he's, he's done many things. I counted 441 emails from Ron in my inbox, more than any other council member. So if you think I'm sending you a lot of emails, then Ron is, is the winner. Finally, as the, the Long Branch Sluggo Community Association Newsletter Editor, you know, we, I've come to Ron with, with ideas, which he's helped fulfill, helped perfect, to make sure that we get the messaging right, and for that, that speed and that promptness that he responds, it's much appreciated. There are two messages in the coming newsletter that will be, you know, have Ron's input, and in fact, the magnet itself, there's a second promotion, anyone who wants one, I have them, that, that was an idea that first came up through the newsletter with Ron's help, and then from that became something more tangible and physical. So thank you, Ron. We will miss you, but next week, we do have an Emergency Preparedness Committee meeting, and we do have a Chief's Advisory Board meeting, so you're not done yet, and I look forward to seeing you next week. Thank you.
Well, now I'm going to allow, and for those that are waiting on the main event, which I think is Laurel Ave, just be patient with us a little while longer while we put a little, share a little love for our staff member, Ron Hardy. So council member Small.
Thank you, Mayor. Ron, I got to tell you, it's going to be a difficult management of walking around in public places with, knowing that you are not here. And not just because you will have made those public places safe in advance, or that we will be in compliance in any number of ways that will keep liability away from us and exposure limited, but because all of the kids, in particular, all the homies from all the larger buildings, trust you so much that during the transition between one police divorce logic to the other, your stalwart performance in that role as communicator was instrumental in making sure that a lot of kids maintained a positive opinion of the people that you work with. And so I just wanted to make sure that I thanked you for that on behalf of my kids and a bunch of other ones.
Councilmember Fulcher.
Thank you. I also participate in a lot of the activities you've put together, so thank you very much for all the things you've done, the humility that you bring to your position, because yes, you've been here for 11 years, but you've done a couple other things before we got our hands on you, so really appreciate all of the experience that you have. Also, thank you for working on the succession plan now that you're leaving. It's really hard for anybody to leave a position they've been doing for a while, and once again, using that humility in, in finding somebody to do your job, that we know we're not going to be able to replace you, but we'll find somebody who is able to stand on the groundwork that you've laid for the next person. And I really appreciate the care, confidence, and steadiness that you have and that you bring to emergency situations, because those are things that make everybody feel safer, and so thank you.
Thank you, council member Fulcher. Councilmember Dibala.
Yes, I just wanted to add on to the, the notion that you embrace new ideas when you see them, and they're good ideas. Thank you for picking up on the blood drives and, and what everybody else said, but that is, but, but that in particular, and good luck to, to you and your next, your next adventure.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Hardy, I thank you, not just for all the things we've heard about tonight, but for the many other things that haven't even been mentioned that you've done. You've really brought a, a heart to the job. When you joined this city many years ago, I won't add a couple more many's, but it was a while ago, and I've really appreciated the, the compassion that you have for the residents of this city, and that for a long time, I felt like I'd like to see you cloned more often within our police department because you were upholding the values that I thought were near and dear to Tacoma Park, and thank you for your work. We'll miss you, and so will my wife.
Oh, gosh, if I don't speak, does that mean you'll stay? Okay. Well, I just want to, to add on to my sincerest appreciation to, to Ron Hardy. I don't, I don't think people, I mean, if I were to poll folks that are residents in the City of Tacoma Park, and how many of you actually have that magnet somewhere in your kitchen, raise your hand, because I know I got it. And also the work that you've been doing so closely with all of our residents throughout the city, from our residents in our multifamily buildings, where you're educating people on ways to evacuate, but also encouraging tenants' associations to be mindful of their neighbors in the case of emergencies, and know who they are, and try to help assist people when emergencies happen, from the Stop the Bleed to the Narcan, you're always at the cutting edge of what are the things that we need to make sure that we can equip each and every one of our residents to know how to do to save themselves, to save their neighbors, to save their families. So, and also as a Community Police Academy dropout, I do want to thank you again for your patience in trying to teach me all of the necessary tools in an abbreviated time. So I thank you so much for all that you've done for the City of Tacoma Park, and we sincerely will miss you, but I've recognized the fact, and congratulations on your retirement. And I was wondering, because of that sign, whether or not there's a new emergency. So with that, with that noise that's going on, but with that, I would like to ask you to come up. It's nothing big, we're just, we're just going to take a picture. We're just taking a picture. So we would like to have you come up just so that we could take a picture with you and the council, and if there are other staff that are here that want to be a part of the photo, please come up. He is. I think there's something going on with my ability to control the mics. Okay, there, there we go, got it.
All right. First of all, I'd like to thank the patience of all the people in the audience for this moment. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, all my friends that showed up here, especially my work wife, Kathy. Many of the projects I got involved in were her ideas. I just happened to be able to work out the logistics. I'd like to say that all these traits that I inherited from my grandparents, who lived in Tacoma Park for some 70 years, my father, who grew up in Tacoma Park, went to Blair High School. And the four years that I actually lived in Tacoma Park over on Columbia Drive, in that nice little white stucco house on the corner, that I drive by often, as well as my grandparents' house on Park Avenue. I've really grown to like Tacoma Park. I've been down here many years, over my 68 years, for Grandma's pies, family reunions, July 4th parades. So I'm going to miss it, but I'm not going to not come back at times and visit. I do have a lot I want to do with my wife, my daughter, my grandkids, and keep up with the horses and the mending of the fences and the downed trees. So I appreciate the proclamation and all the kind words that everyone said to me. Thank you all very much.
Wonderful. Okay, so now we're going to move to public comments on voting items. And so just as a reminder for folks what the voting items are. So we have four voting items tonight. It's second reading ordinance approving the FY 2024 budget amendment number four, single reading ordinance approving procurement of three police vehicles, resolution authorizing submittal of FY 25 National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund, or NED grant, applications, and then the single reading ordinance authorizing the use of NED grant funds to assist with the tenant purchase of 7520 Maple Avenue. Do we have any comments on voting items this evening? Okay, going once, going twice, none in person? Do we? Okay. Is it on the voting items?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Come on down.
On the purchase of the Duval. You're about to vote on contributing $55,000 of public money to the tenants' association. Who is the buyer of the Duval with whom the tenants are talking?
So right now, where we are in the process, I will say that the tenants have been having conversations with various partners. Right now, the goal is to ensure that the tenants have the ability to have that, be able to make that decision and have control over their property. So that's our first task, but there will definitely be additional conversations going forward around any next steps in terms of the development of that property.
It sounds like a good idea. I just want to say that I, as well as others, are concerned about the demographic shifts that are occurring within the city, especially as will be prompted by the zoning changes that will follow the adoption of the minor master plan amendment. I think it's important to know who's selling, who's buying, who's moving out, who's moving in. Are we really preserving affordable housing or not? I hope the answer is yes. The more information you share, the greater our trust in your judgment.
Sure. If you want to stick around before we vote on this particular item, there will be a little bit more background.
I survived the last long meeting that I went into this.
No worries. All right. Do we have any other general public comments on voting items?
Do we have any virtual comments on voting items?
Perfect. All right. Do we have any general public comments? I'm sure we do. All right. No worries. Come on down. Just as a reminder, if folks could please just state your name in your ward, and you will be, we're sticking with three minutes of that, just so that everybody knows, and we'll make sure that that clock goes for folks.
Is this, this is a mic? Okay.
Yes, it is.
Hi, my name is Marlena Valdez, and I'm here to comment on the proposed closure of southbound Laurel Avenue. You're going to have a presentation on the consultant's report on the traffic study. I live on Walnut, because it's a block behind the Old Town Stores. In addition to Westmoreland and Pine, Walnut is most affected by the traffic from the closure of northbound Laurel, which has already been closed for several years. We have a significant number of cars and trucks coming through, particularly during the evening rush hour. Our street is not built for this kind of traffic. It has speed bumps and five wooners, which are planners that go out into the lanes of traffic on alternate sides of the street, making our street capable only of letting one car through at a time at certain points on the block. When the northbound lane of Laurel was closed, we had no opportunity for input. It was just closed by the city with a statement that due to COVID, we had to give the restaurants, there were two of them, space in the street to put tables. These restaurants already had sidewalk space for outdoor seating. During the time the closure of southbound Laurel has been discussed, one of our WACO members, Burn Kelly, a landscape architect, has drawn up a plan that he would like to make available to the city that leaves Laurel Avenue open in both directions by removing the lane of parking between southbound Laurel and the Adventist Church. Burn's plan leaves room for two handicap parking spaces in this one block of Laurel, and completely protects the eatery. To my knowledge, the city has never considered reopening the northbound lane of Laurel Avenue, even though it was a thoroughfare to other parts of Tacoma Park. And all of this traffic has been dumped on Walnut, Westmoreland, and Pine, as cars try to find a way to go northbound through Tacoma Park. A second problem is the volume of traffic at Eastern Avenue and Walnut, which is a five-way intersection that is very dangerous to bikes and pedestrians. We have been asking the city and the District of Columbia for many years for a four-way stop at that intersection, and we have, and our pleas have been virtually ignored. The traffic study took into account the need for a four-way stop at this intersection, and then discarded this idea because it would violate a nationwide traffic manual without further consideration. Speaking for myself and my husband, we strongly oppose the closure of southbound Laurel Avenue, which the study admits will dump more traffic on our neighborhood streets. We propose that the city look again at the streetery with options for two-way traffic and wait until after the 400 apartment complex, the 400 apartments have been opened at the corner of Laurel and Eastern. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other general public comments this evening? We, no, we do in-person first, and then we go to Zoom.
Just trying to give the President of WACO a chance to speak. My name is Lois Wessel. I live in Ward Three at 7005 Westmoreland Avenue, which is adjacent to Tacoma Urban Park. I'm also a family nurse practitioner, an active member of the Alliance of Nurses for Healthy Environments, which is a national organization based in our own mountain near Maryland. And I'm a Nurse Scientist Fellow at the Environmental Health Research Institute. And I say all that to give you a little background about some of the things that I'm going to discuss today that I think we're missing from the study. The limitations of the one-week study in October called to question the findings on many levels. Traffic on a rainy fall day in October may be quite different than a sunny day in May, or a day like today in June, where I watch from my window, many cars go by. The assumption that the additional traffic on a narrow residential street would have limited impact on the neighborhood without considering a focus group or talking to the members of the community is one of the shortcomings. Another impact of the study that it failed to look at was the increased air pollution around children's play spaces in the community. Tacoma Urban Park and Westmoreland is utilized by local babysitters, all of the preschools, after-school programs during the day, and families during the evenings and weekends. Breakthrough Montessori, the Tacoma Children's School, both of those on Willow Street in the district, have playgrounds near Willow and Aspen. People's Books on Westmoreland Avenue offers children's activities, including storytime and music events. Children are more susceptible to the harmful effects of pollution. Children's respiratory rates are higher than those of adults. They take in more air per kilogram of body weight, and because of their physical height, they breathe air closer to the ground where some pollutants, especially traffic exhausts, are emitted and become concentrated. Air pollution can lead to low birth weight, asthma, reduced lung function, cancer, respiratory infection, allergies in both children and adults. Additional traffic on these streets will expose children to increased air pollution, thus increasing the risk of the diseases that I mentioned. And of course, also the risk of a child being hit by a car as they speed down Westmoreland, which they still do. Children cannot vote for or influence relevant policies. Only we, as adults, can do it for them. Careful consideration to the potential health impacts of the children in our community are needed before additional traffic is dumped onto our streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments in the room? And we will go to the virtual comments after we've done folks in the building.
My name is Robert Patton. I live at 7005 Westmoreland Avenue, and I live with that articulate nurse that just spoke. I used to work for a tool design group, and I think, given the scope of work that they had, and the methodologies and the technical work done on the study, it was largely accurate. I don't think its conclusion is supported by what it found. And so I disagree with the conclusion, which says, "A closure to motor vehicle traffic on Laurel Avenue between Carroll and Eastern Avenues is expected to create moderate but manageable impacts to traffic patterns within the study area." I don't know how we're going to manage it. If more cars come on Willow, Walnut, and Westmoreland, and Pine, they're going to come. That's not managing traffic. Managing traffic would be having those cars stay on the collectors and arterial streets of the area, or other things that would reduce car use in our area. So I think it's kind of inappropriate to presume what the neighbors would feel is acceptable and what is moderate. These are general judgmental terms that are relative. And even the study explains that counting cars and grading streets, A, B, C, D, is relative, too. The other thing about this study that I couldn't find anything discussing is that Willow, Walnut, Pine, Westmoreland, these are not two-lane streets. These are streets that have parked cars on one side, and when two cars pass, try to pass each other, they have to go five miles an hour. The congestion does not happen just at the intersections, which is all this study looks at. The congestion happens all the way down the street for the whole block when there's more cars, and everybody has to take turns going into the little gaps, like was pointed out on Westmoreland. So I think that methodology assumes that streets that are being studied are two-way streets, where the traffic flows to the intersection, only has to deal with other traffic at the intersection. No, you have to deal with the other traffic all the way down the street. And so I think we need methodologies to take that into account. All of our neighbors felt very strongly that in closing streets, we need to look at not just the traffic trade-offs, but all of the potential trade-offs in all directions from that kind of a thing. So we urge the council not to put too much weight on this study.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Hi, Council and others. I'm Rick Weiss. I live in Ward Three. I'm a 30-plus-year resident of Tacoma Park with a background in science and journalism, but also with eight years of experience in federal policymaking, which is the most relevant part of my background for today's remarks. Let's say there are some interested parties who want to shut down a public street to expand an outdoor dining area. Let's even posit that this is not a selfish, business-driven ambition, but rather a generous effort to add greenish space where residents can gather outdoors and enjoy each other's company. How do you go about pursuing that process in a progressive democracy? One way is for the proponents of this change to arrange a study that's designed to look only at a small piece of the puzzle, like traffic. And you say, "It's just a pilot study, so don't worry." And you say, "You have no plans right now." But now you've built a foundation that, in the vacuum of any other evidence, becomes the basis for a decision to close a street, because no funding or other resources have been set aside to consider other options or interests. Alternatively, a community leader or community leaders can first engage in a process of figuring out what, in this neighborhood, we are trying to accomplish, and who all the stakeholders are. And you'd conduct a study or studies not just addressing technical issues, like how many cars are going to be affected, but also social issues, like things like health and safety, health and safety of the residents breathing the air, playing in the parks, and a full accounting of the planned development nearby. And that whole discussion with all stakeholders would not just look at the one option that one group wants, the option to close a street, but rather it would look at all options that might achieve our newly defined goals. If we want more green space, what other ways should be considered at the same time? If we want to boost restaurant business, what other ways should compete with this road closing plan? In this case, here in Tacoma Park, we've not even had a discussion about what we, as a community, really want, much less whether closing a road is the best way to get it. What do you get when you create a narrowly focused report like this to address a larger multifactorial problem? You get a report that claims flatly, as this one does, that closing Laurel Avenue will balance, is possible to do, and still balance all the needs of Tacoma Park's vehicles, businesses, and residents. That's what this report concludes. What does this report know about our needs beyond traffic? It's a traffic study. And I also have to say that I don't have the technical knowledge to critique this study on technical grounds, but I do know that to come up with a conclusion that says closing Laurel Avenue will not cause an increase too much, will not cause too much traffic, you are not the people who know how much is too much in our neighborhood. I and my neighbors know how much is too much. You can tell me how many cars there are, but you're not going to tell me whether it's too much. And what is too much is the number of cars that have already been cruising down our streets for three years or more because of the closing of the northbound lane in the first place. And we ought to keep that in mind, that this is a fake baseline in the first place as we look ahead. Let's not make that mistake again.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
My name is Ingrid Hassan, and I live on Walnut in Ward Three. And I wasn't really planning on saying anything tonight. I came in support of my neighbors. But something that happened on my way home from Wheaton late this afternoon made me want to come up here and tell you. Just in the space of going, turning on to Columbia and then Pine to head towards Walnut, it's a very short distance, I ran into about 15 cars coming towards me, and they all appeared to be coming from Eastern Walnut, going through on Walnut, around Elm, and then going up Pine. I didn't see anybody turning on to Elm to continue to go east on Elm, and I didn't see anybody turning right on to Columbia to go into the neighborhood on that side of things. And I didn't see anybody turning on to Westmoreland. That was in the space of, what, two minutes? And I can tell you that my 95-year-old mother is now afraid to cross Walnut because of the volume and the speed of the cars coming on Walnut. She will only go around the block where she doesn't have to cross any streets anymore unless I'm with her. That never used to be the situation. So I'm just really sort of speaking ad hoc my recent experience, corroborating what my neighbors have already said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Moore, and I live in Ward Two. I'm against the city's plan to close down both sides of Laurel Avenue. The closure of one side has already resulted in a loss of handicap parking, of a handicap parking spot that used to be directly in front of the post office. For those of you who are lucky enough not to have any sort of mobility issues, you may not fully understand how important it is to have adequate, accessible parking available for those who need it. Yes, there are a few handicap spaces in the lot owned by Mr. Ursiolo behind the businesses. However, these are located on the end of the lot nearest Motorcat and the barber shop. I've communicated at length with Frank Giliard, the USPS supervisor for our area. He says that since the post office rents their space, they have no say in the number of or the location of the handicap spaces. Accessible spaces can't be moved to the section of Mr. Ursiolo's lot closest to the post office because the trash and recycling trucks need freedom of movement to empty the dumpsters on that side of the lot for the businesses. The handicap space that used to be at the corner of Eastern and Laurel on the DC side, diagonally across from the handicap space in front of the post office that was removed, has been eliminated due to construction of new housing in the place, in place of the building that once housed EF Education. The loss of revenue The loss of revenue to the city incurred by the removal of metered parking spaces on the currently closed section of Laurel is problematic, too. I know you've received information from others about this issue. Eliminating more parking meter revenue after lifting the inventory tax on businesses does not make good fiscal sense. And not that I wish harm or illness upon any of you, but I hope that you will, for a moment, put yourselves in the shoes, wheelchairs, and walkers of those who need accessible parking. Remember that those who use braces, canes, or shillelies need to be able to get themselves and their mobility device in and out of their vehicle safely. You or those you love may one day be in the position of needing accessible parking. You never know when the effects of aging, illness, surgery, Councilmember DeBala, or an unfortunate accident will kick in. I want it to be available for you and yours, too. Removing accessible parking, even one space, shows a blatant disregard for those with disabilities. Prove that we are truly a welcoming community. Please add, rather than continue, to eliminate accessible parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional? Yep, come on down.
Good evening. For a change, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I was moved by that. And I wanted to just say, for the record, I spent over two years on the Parking Task Force for the city. Roz is here tonight, and I think she will support what I say. We did a line-by-line inclusion of items that were the most important to the Parking Task Force. The number-one item on that list was handicap parking. Universally, readily available, that was the consensus of the group. And if she doesn't have it, I took conscientious notes. Aside from that, I would also request that the council refocus again, as someone just mentioned, that a few years ago, a number of years ago, the council eliminated some $400,000 in business taxes. I think it was an inventory tax. And now virtually gives away $2,500 a parking space. It was $2,484 or something. And the businesses are allowed to use it for about $400 a year. Okay? If you want to close Laurel Avenue, do it on the weekends like they do in Europe. Do it on the weekends and rent the space. Make it a revenue producer instead of revenue stealer. The city, I presented to these new council members, the five-year budget shortfall, which averaged $5 million a year, more money spent than you took in. You're obviously in need of revenue. And this during COVID, when you got $17.4 million. So the city should look at a couple of these things. First is parking. You know, for me, you know, I had a friend, and she had to transport her child, you know, in a special van. And it really meant the world to her to have handicap parking. I mean, it was essential. It was absolutely essential for her. So I'm kind of, I guess, begging for that. And rethink. The council promised that they would find a way to replace the lost inventory tax instead of placing that burden solidly on the backs of homeowners. And as one who meets many who could really use the help, I speak in their stead. Thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So the theme of the night seems to be, "I didn't intend to speak, but I will."
Well, you already spoke.
On a Friday night, I get two bites. I had two apples, one bite for each apple. I do want to associate myself with the remarks of the previous speakers, especially Rick Weiss. Rick said, "How much traffic is too much traffic?" Let me ask another question. How much table space is enough table space? Do you really need more than is already there? I don't live near Laurel. I live near the middle school. I do sit outside those restaurants. I patronize the restaurants. I do sit outside. How much is enough? There's already one side of Laurel. The proposal that I never heard of until it was said tonight of reengineering the area so that you have a wider space on the, what would be, you know, the business side of the street, you could still have two lanes of traffic and parking on the church side of the street. And I agree with Paul Hubner. Think about limited closure. Weekends, make it up. Seven o'clock Friday night to midnight Sunday or whatever. Think creatively. Think of alternatives. Weigh out the various interests of the various stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Good evening. Jessica Landman, Ward One. I don't want to speak about the details of the proposed closure because you've heard a lot of things already, all of which I agree with, about the specifics of what's the problem. I do agree with the comments that were made with Rick Weiss about the process by which you received the recommendations in the traffic study, which is limited to traffic issues. And this goes back to the lack of a useful process for taking in suggestions and advice from the community. You got comments just now from Paul Hubner about the former parking committee. And I will reiterate a suggestion that I made earlier when we were speaking about efforts that you were making to revise the recommendations for how petitions for street traffic calming and sidewalks are made. There was a complete streets committee. That committee, which was a method for getting advice from the community about how the city should proceed on issues of concern to the council and the community, that committee was eliminated because there were problems with it. It wasn't fully representative of the community. And so the decision was made to eliminate it in the effort to streamline some legislative and executive functions of the city. I think that was the wrong decision. I think it would have been a lot better to figure out a way to make it fully representative. This is a perfect example of an issue that needed better community, full-on stakeholder participation. You would not have had a bunch of advice from traffic technocrats that lacked full input from all the stakeholders who have something to say about this proposal. It's evident that the people who are the most affected in their homes, in their communities, in their daily life by this proposal, you wouldn't have a traffic study standing alone to tell you what a good idea would be for Laurel Avenue if you had a complete streets committee calling on the community as a whole to sit down and talk about what would work. A complete streets committee would look at the complete situation, how everyone is affected by this. So I suggest that you go back and think about how you could have a process that could look at an issue like this, that could look at purple line impacts on sidewalks on communities who are affected there, where every ward could sit down together with everybody who's affected by a particular situation and think together about what we want, what our values are, what best suits us in dealing with an issue like this. This is a perfect example of how looking through only one narrow lens gives you an answer that is doing nobody any good. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Thank you, council members. My name's Natalie Hopkins, and I live in Ward One. And I'm just basically going to restate points that other people have mentioned about the process. I was shocked that this was happening. I had heard nothing about it. And I do think more community involvement is critical because, as people have stated, this is going to affect their lives. And as the nurse practitioner said, it could affect children's health. I mean, this is not something, a decision that could be taken cavalierly. And I was going to bring up the disabled access issue. There was a while when I was going to the post office frequently. And I noticed numerous times people circling just so they could get a spot because they had limited mobility. And they would wait until a spot was available and park there and walk over to the post office. And, excuse me, it's very important to take into consideration the disabled people. And I'm not going to beat a dead horse because it's been said eloquently by other people, but I don't think that was considered at all in this study. And that's very critical. So anyway, I just hope that more community outreach could be done and that you would take into consideration other groups, such as the disabled, and their access to the post service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments in the room before we go virtual?
Cordial salutations. Thank you all for your service. My name is Aron Costa. I'm representing Ward Five, 19-year resident here of Tacoma Park. And I'm here on behalf of the Department of Grounds and the Department of Biology at Washington Adventist University regarding this plant here, which was a gift from the City of Tacoma Park to the president, who made its way colloquially to the groundskeeper, Dr. Laplum, who did not know particularly what to do with it. And given it to me, I gave it a little soil analysis. I understood its fungal-to-bacterial ratio. I could see that it was dying. We wanted it planted, but there weren't further instructions that came along with this plant. So it was a very thorough investigation on what we should do with this. And we made some soil amendments, one heavy in bacterial ratio, another in fungal ratio. We got it up to, you know, back to life. And someone who can care for it, and actually named it Fernando, it's a librarian. But on behalf of the department, we thought it would be just to solicit a city arborist to perhaps give some recommendations on where it could be planted. Perhaps in light of being Pollinator Week, it could complement specific pollinator habitat. It could complement some efforts for the stormwater management, which we're assessing now. And also historically relative, in 1985, there was a ceremonial tree planting with Mayor Abbott, and where he declared this as Tacoma Park is a Tree City. So there was a notion to suggest and hint that perhaps there could be a tree planting ceremony, which can complement this plant whose name is Fernando. So that is all. I'll leave the emails for the clerk. That's all. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm going to break protocol to say, "Thank you very much." Because I believe Councilmember Hansaka and myself thought of it more as a photo op and less of, and then deferred all of the maintenance and survival of said plant on to Washington Adventist University. So we appreciate you all nursing the plant back to health. All right. So do we have, can we move to virtual comments? Do we have any other general comments in the room? Okay. We're going to move to our virtual commenters.
So Mary Jane Machuay should be first.
Excellent. Okay, Mary Jane, you have the floor.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. First of all, I appreciate the people who stood up for handicapped people because I very, me and an older friend who lived on my block are very much against Laurel Avenue. We were against Laurel Avenue, we shut down it all. And if you're going to close both lanes, it's very discriminatory. And I hate it. And I feel it's another form of gentrification. I cannot afford, we and my friend are low-income homeowners. We can't afford to eat out that often and sit and just watch the world goodbye. We are low-income homeowners. And we're, you know, plus that, my son never got, was able to get his $1,000 for his ARPA funds because he was too disabled. No one came and helped him. No one in the city helped him apply. I'm not allowed to apply because he's adult. He's over 18. I can't force him. He is a social outcast in the city. It's a shame because he was, he's biracial. His father's a black man from Kenya. I obviously, it's a white woman born in Washington, D.C. But he doesn't, he's not at home here in Tacoma Park. He never has. You all talk about diversity, but you don't do enough. And he's asexual. He doesn't, he's not even gay or heterosexual. He's none of the above. You don't care about that. It's like you have to have some kind of sexual orientation to exist in Tacoma Park. It's like, I have always been a social outcast my entire life, so I, I don't know. I don't feel, I moved into Tacoma Park because I thought, finally, finally, I would be able to, me and my son and people like him, we'd be able to exist and be treated with respect. You care more about the damn books. You spend millions of dollars to house libraries, but not house the homeless. People are more important. People are more important. People are much more important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Machuay. And our next public commenter is?
So now we have Bruce Moyer.
Bruce, you get your time.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
We can.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. I'm Bruce Moyer, 6907 Westmoreland Avenue in Ward Three. I serve as president of Westmoreland Area Community Organization, known as WACCO. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you via Zoom tonight because of my presence in Florida earlier today to help celebrate the happy occasion of my mother's 96th birthday. Thank you. Our neighborhood association, WACCO, is the oldest continuously active neighborhood association in the city of Tacoma Park. It represents the interests of the neighborhood most impacted by the changes in the use of Laurel Avenue. I join you this evening to express the opposition of many WACCO residents to the closure of the southbound lane of Laurel Avenue. Residents are opposed to the full closure of Laurel because of the significant increase in traffic and its impact upon the safety of our streets, our children, and the integrity of our neighborhood. Two evenings ago, WACCO neighbors met to discuss Laurel Avenue and the traffic study you will review this evening. Nineteen of us identified shortcomings with this study and other concerns that you are hearing about tonight. I'd like to underscore the broad themes that emerged from those citizen comments. On a personal note, I come to this conversation as a 45-year resident of Tacoma Park. We all recognize that every neighborhood in the city is unique, but the WACCO neighborhood will be uniquely and disproportionately affected by any closure decision about Laurel Avenue for a combination of reasons. First, the WACCO neighborhood is adjacent to Tacoma Park's boundary with the District of Columbia along Eastern Avenue. That adjacency with D.C. has caused Tacoma Park to witness largely outside its control a projected increase of some 2,000 additional housing units. Those development projects, along with the city's closure of the northbound lane of Laurel several years ago to create the streetery, are already bringing increased traffic and congestion along Carroll Avenue, Laurel Avenue, and nearby residential streets. There has been a noticeable increase in traffic for the worse, and the neighborhood is reaching the limits of its capacity to safely absorb anymore. Yet, the traffic study itself projects at least 20% increase in traffic on nearby streets where the city to close the southbound lane of Laurel. Before I continue, I think three minutes were allotted to me. I had requested five minutes. May I have two additional minutes?
That's perfectly fine.
Thank you. Second, the WACCO neighborhood lies next to the Old Town Commercial District. 15 years ago, you may know that the neighborhood successfully challenged the construction of a five-story commercial and residential development in Old Town proposed by an outside developer. Our opposition focused on the scale and size of the project and the significant impact the development would have upon traffic in the neighborhood. Consistent with those views, we have worked with the city in various ways over time to assure residential parking and safe streets. Overall, a positive collaborative relationship between Old Town Commercial interests and the WACCO neighborhood has existed over the years. Our residents have supported a vibrant commercial district at our doorstep and have supported Old Town shops and restaurants. But if Laurel Avenue is further closed, that collaborative relationship will be strained immeasurably. Third, the streets of the nearby WACCO neighborhood, especially in their layout and size, are impacted by the neighborhood's hilly topography. Some streets nearby to Laurel are laid out in an irregular pattern, not a typical grid-like arrangement more conducive to traffic mitigation. Further, some streets are narrow, winding, inclined, even steep. Because many houses lack driveways or garages, on-street residential parking is a necessity. This makes cut-through traffic, which Laurel Avenue closure This makes cut-through traffic, which Laurel Avenue closures would certainly generate more of, even more dangerous. Apart from this, in a proactive fashion, Tacoma Park and the District of Columbia should undertake a traffic study of a four-way stop sign at the corner of Eastern Walnut Avenues to deal with the unsafe situation that exists there. Finally, closure of the southbound lane of Laurel Avenue has never been promoted or supported by any neighborhood in the city. From the start, closures of Laurel, first northbound and now potentially southbound, have originated with city staff and pushed through the City Council, then thrust upon the nearby neighborhood without thoughtful analysis of traffic impacts, or even more important, a balancing of the public need for a streetery compared to the priority of safe streets and neighborhoods. In the spirit of dialogue, WACCO will request a further meeting with the city and the contractor on the underlying traffic study. But let me reiterate, WACCO remains opposed to any further effort by the city to promote or study the southbound closure of Laurel Avenue. Thank you for your attention this evening.
Thank you very much.
And we have, I believe, one more commenter.
Jeffrey Hopkins.
Hi, thank you. And yeah, my name is Jeff Hopkins. I live at 51 Walnut Avenue, which is on the corner of Walnut, Eastern, and Little Eastern Avenue. And I wanted you to know that I support any initiatives to continue to develop the streetery by closing down southbound Laurel Avenue. Last year, most of the homes on the Walnut block proudly celebrated their 100th anniversary. And nearly every single home on the block is a contributing resource to the Tacoma historical area. I think it is a great place to live. And I understand and sympathize with the notion of freezing the neighborhood in place or back in time at the same or lower level of traffic and the same or lower background noise volume. There are things that I care about more and that are more realistically achievable. I care about quality of life and opportunities for social interaction with my friends and neighbors that I care so much about. I care about minimizing my use of an automobile in my day-to-day activities and replacing it with increased opportunities for walking, biking, and using transit. I care about Tacoma Park's stance as an open and welcoming community to people on both sides of the Maryland-DC border. The expansion of the streetery to include southbound Laurel Ave. is probably the best opportunity I have seen to pursue the objectives that I care so deeply about. Open, public space is becoming more and more scarce in this part of Tacoma Park, and enhancing the public assets that we already have at the streetery will allow people to socialize in a welcoming environment. I believe people will view the costs and benefits of a move to enhance and enlarge the streetery differently, depending on how they personally value the costs and benefits associated with the development. It seems natural. I urge the council to consider both the benefits and the costs presented by my friends and neighbors. For example, even though the closest neighbors will likely benefit the most from the action, they are most likely, because they are most likely to take advantage of an enhanced streetery, please don't assume the cost of increased traffic and lack of access on the surrounding streets, including Walnut Avenue, will take care of themselves. I would urge the council and city staff to consider an analogy. For example, the case of the council deciding to build something like a library. The council and city staff would, of course, have to develop plans to address offside impacts of their intervention and convince others that their efforts would be effective. The council's building would be required to address and eliminate stormwater runoff, including the stormwater runoff associated with the existing site, as well as any increase in stormwater runoff associated with the new building. The council would be wise to consider the traffic and access impacts of the streetery in the same way they would address stormwater runoff for a new building. They should address baseline traffic as well as increased traffic brought on by the enhanced streetery and work to convince others that their plans will be effective. To that end, at a minimum, I support any effort by the council to work with the DC Department of Transportation to establish a four-way stop at Eastern and Walnut Avenue, as well as other creative solutions to mitigate traffic in the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other virtual public comments? Okay, great. Well, thank you all so much for providing your comments tonight. We're going to move on to council comments. Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to get to this quick so I could be reminded or mindful of some of the things that were said. I do think that as we discuss issues of traffic and traffic safety and walkability and pacemaking and all of the other things that are priorities in a town that is as diverse as this, sometimes those things butt up against each other in ways that are difficult or unpleasant. As a person who lives in Ward Six and has seen a degradating traffic situation for a while and an increase in traffic density for that same while without a real substantive response, I would say that it's important to make sure that everyone knows who the benefits and burdens are for the streetery. If there is an increased amount of revenue that is going to make up a shortfall, that is a constant nagging presence in the lives of some of the residents that are here and any number of those kinds of things that are essentially wraparounds to this. I'm certain that the Community Association, or I'm sorry, the Business Vendors Association would have a sober and reflection on this. They do lose some parking as well. And I just want to make sure that as we begin this process, that we do not begin it with the presupposition that there is some sort of grand design and cabal to, uh, single-handedly turn over the traffic situation here, particularly since it is the bane of my existence. I am infinitely concerned about quality of life issues, quiet use and enjoyment, screaming into bus stations, any number of things. And I don't want to miss, anyone to mistake my desire for calmer heads on this issue as this is the first time we're actually even bringing it in here to rule the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thanks for all of the speakers tonight, especially on the Laurel Avenue. And I know that it, I was a part of the Zoom call on Monday, so there is, there were 19 residents in the West Moreland Area, the WACCO call, and we've heard a very good representation of what those comments were tonight. And they covered, you know, the technical issues and the process issues. And I have to say, I stand with where WACCO comes out. I support their opinions and recommendations. And as was noted, I think importantly, not only will they most likely be the most impacted Tacoma Park area, neighborhood with the southbound closure, but they were the most impacted negatively with the northbound closure. And that was, that was never calculated. Indeed, the proposal to the COG, the Council of Governments, said specifically, it said there were no measurable impacts for the northbound closure. That's clearly not the experience of the residents of that area, and they don't want it to happen again. I think it's very clear that a more comprehensive study of potential impacts and the closure, which would include parking, traffic, parking violence, safety issues, disability issues, we haven't talked about, and indeed, the post office access and air pollution and environmental factors. I am concerned that this helpful but limited study of one outcome misses the larger goal of goal-setting and research for the community to do. What is the problem that is being solved or goal to be addressed? Staff have suggested in the cover sheet, the partial plage feels like a road's been closed off rather than a space designed for people. There are dangers to pedestrians, ADA accessibility challenges, limits to kinds of users. Each of these problems and perhaps others need review, and we're not a big part of this, or a part of this traffic study. I support a more comprehensive and public review of the problems, perhaps as Jessica Landman suggested, the previous Safe Streets Committee would be one way to do it, or a task force. So I think, let's go slow with this. Let's bring it back to the community. There are pluses and minuses of doing nothing. There are pluses and minuses for doing something, and there are more than one option about doing something. Last, so I think that we have a long ways to go to vet this with our community, and I will do my best to be a part of that discussion for all voices heard. One last point, not about that. I just want to note that the beginning, the beginning date for registering for candidacy of the 2024 elections was June 10th. On the heels of that date, I'm announcing tonight that I will not run for Ward Three's council reelection. I will, of course, continue to work hard for the balance of my term. My reasons for not running are both personal and civic. I want, I feel a responsibility to give plenty of time and encouragement to civic-minded Ward Three residents who may consider running. I welcome anyone interested in running to contact me directly. I'll talk with you. We'll have coffee on the eatery. What do you say? So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Fulcher?
I really wasn't going to talk about this tonight. So when I ran for office, I did say that I was in favor of closing the other side of Laurel Avenue. And so, you know, in full transparency, that is something that I ran on, and that is something that I do still support. As far as things that I've heard tonight, I was unaware of, and I've been to that intersection of Little Eastern, Eastern, Walnut, and had my own difficulties. And I do agree that a four-way stop would be helpful as a not-traffic expert. And I am willing to reach out to DC and try to work with them on that. The traffic circle that was suggested in the report by Tool at the intersection of Eastern Carroll and Willow Street is another thing that I'm willing to work on, even without closing of Laurel Avenue. That is a problem right now that we need to address. I appreciated someone, I think that it was Mr. Gagliardo, mentioned, you know, what about just closing half of Laurel Avenue during the weekends? You know, maybe that is a intermediary step that we can talk about now rather than, you know, the bigger project, which we do not have in this current budget. This is not something we are planning on doing during the fiscal year of 2025. I do have to say that when we as a council don't do a traffic study first, we get told you should have done a traffic study first. And so now we did do a traffic study first, and we're getting told that we did things out of order. And so it is a little bit confusing as far as which order we should do things in as a city council. That was all not very well thought out because, like I said, I wasn't planning on talking about that tonight, seeing as how, this is not something that I see us doing in the near future. Onto other things. Tomorrow, I will be at Piney Branch Park, behind Piney Branch Elementary School, tie-dying as an end-of-year activity with the children in our community from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. If there's anybody in the audience who's a dynamite tie-dyer, who'd like to come out, I'd appreciate your help. And unfortunately, I'm going to miss the Tuesday thing here at 7:30 next Tuesday, the pollinator discussion, which I was really looking forward to, and I RSVP'd that I could go to, but I realized that it conflicts with the Third Annual Jeremy Black Scholarship Award Reception and Fundraiser, which I will be attending that night. And then also, on another note, here in Ward One, and I believe that the orienteering beginning point where you can download the app is over right this way in the woods beside, between the city building and Tacoma Park Elementary School. Dominic Hanzak, I don't know if anybody's familiar with him, for his Eagle Scout Award project, he's put an orienteering course in Tacoma Park, which is a really exciting way to sort of have a treasure hunt in Tacoma Park. So if you're looking for another way to interact with the outdoors, definitely give this check out. And then, I'm sorry, I know he's leading, so he's leading this on February, right? I'm sorry, on Friday, right?
Yeah, the Friday that schools, this Friday.
So this Friday, before your kids jump into whatever they're doing this summer, from 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at Piney Branch Park, Dominic will lead people through this orienteering. So I hope you can send your kids out or, you know, even if you're an adult and want to come check it out, come learn a little bit more about orienteering. Thank you.
Councilmember Hanzak?
Thanks, Shayna. I'm sure Dominic appreciates, as does Troop 33.
I'm sure he might be turning red somewhere.
Yeah, somewhere, somewhere out there. I just, I wanted, I didn't have my voice the last couple of weeks, so now that I have my voice, I want to say a big thank you to the city and to all those, including the mayor, who helped with the Flower Avenue Block Party. And I can't see if our colleague from Washington Adventist is still here. Yes, you are. So thank you for bringing Fernando. I'm sorry that you don't know the name of the plant. I have to climb in the back to find the name of the plant. I thought we gave that to you. That was a gift, actually, from a member of Cheers Gardening Club. And so I can't tell you right off the top of my head what it is, and I'm sure we can try to help you figure out where to plant it. But I really appreciate your comments tonight. And I just want to say, what a lovely event it was. The most beautiful thing to me about the Flower Avenue Block Party was that we had about 400 or 500 people, I am told, and that's the most people I've ever seen gathered in this part of our city in one spot. But most importantly, it looked like the composition of my neighborhood, and that is something I haven't seen very often on our side of town. And so I really hope we can do that again and that everybody from the city will come out and join us. And I enjoyed the Azalea Awards last weekend. So many wonderful nominees and awardees that were really close to my heart. And then I wanted to share with you, if you haven't made plans already to come to the Juneteenth celebration, I'm sure maybe our mayor or our city manager might speak to this, I just wanted to highlight a few things that make me really excited. I think you know that Terry Siemens and I have been working extensively with the Planning Committee every week for a number of months now. And, but it's exciting to see it come together, and I would love to see more members from across our wide array of community coming together around this really special event. So a few things that are going to be fun. There will be, history of Tacoma Park will be shared there. There will be poetry readings, wonderful live music, activities for adults and kids, many of which are being offered by community groups. Lunch and Learn will have a free book giveaway. Our police will be there. A fire truck will be there. Our rec department will be there. Historic Tacoma is going to have historical photos of Lee Jordan, which is really quite interesting history for anybody who hasn't had a chance to learn more about that. Tacoma Village will be providing rides for the elderly to the event. And Small Things Matter will be doing a mini health clinic with blood pressure screenings, mental health screenings, and giveaways like gift cards and mugs and kid activities. So I really hope that folks will take the time to come and join us.
Councilmember Siemens. Thank you so much, Councilmember Hanzak.
Councilmember Hanzak, I thank you so much. It sounds exciting, and I think I'll go. Appreciate the invitation. I just wanted to mention that, you know, a little Ward Four news. Dominic Dawes, the great gymnast who was born in Ward Four, recently purchased a limited partnership in the Atlanta Falcons. It's not the biggest news, but it's the biggest one we have from Ward Four.
Thank you.
Oh, how do I follow up, Councilmember Siemens? So I, I want to thank everyone that came out and provided comments tonight. We really appreciate it. I think, you know, in terms of the order of things, when it comes to Laurel Avenue, my approach is start with wherever I can get the money first. In this particular case, we were able to get council of governments dollars to help us with funding this traffic study, and so that's where we began. You know, I know that you've heard from others, and you'll hear later tonight, that this is not the only thing that we're doing when it comes to considering the best approach for not only managing traffic for, for the area and creating public space, but also recognizing there's a lot of construction and things that are happening on the DC side and needing to partner with the DC on a number of different aspects of things. So I know that there, there definitely were some, our negative externalities, whenever you close, I say all the time, I live on a street where traffic backs up and blocks me in every day, and traffic is like water. You shut it off one place, it's just going to flow somewhere else. And so I think the biggest thing for us to do is to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, which is what we're trying to do with understanding and exploring the various aspects of the impacts of projects such as these will have, not only the positive things, but also how to mitigate some of the negative impacts. So I thank you all for your feedback tonight. It's been really helpful. Get ready, because we're going to be talking more about it, but I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. In terms of events, it was a busy weekend, very busy weekend. I want to, I had an opportunity to do Moms Demand Action Walk for Gun Violence last weekend. It was such a, to hear mothers tell their stories of loss, residents, local residents who had experienced loss to gun violence just really forces you to acknowledge that we can do better as a community, so I want to thank the organizers for that. The Azalea Awards was awesome. I should have brought a change of clothes. I had to wear orange and like a gun violence tee-shirt, but I didn't have time, so I showed up to the Azalea Awards with an orange tee-shirt that just said "Enough" on it. So if you, this way you know the backstory when you see those photos of me in an orange tee-shirt that just says "Enough" on the, on the, on the front. But I'm so gracious and appreciative to all of the winners of the Azalea Awards, and Bruce Baker received the award for, Lifetime Achievement Award for all of the work that he did with Cheers. So really appreciative of the folks for the Tacoma Foundation and the work that they did there. If you did not go to Pride, you missed some fun stuff. It was a true testament to how amazing Laurel Avenue can be in terms of a public space when we have access to both sides and the parking lot to do the Farmer's Market. So Pride was amazing, super fun, and just really had a fun time to not only engage with, with members of the community, but to just have fun, which was amazing. Also, want to thank Historic Tacoma. I got a chance to do the, the Home and Garden Tour, and it was awesome. It was absolutely amazing. So I do want to encourage people next year, we were on, gosh, Poplar. We went down Poplar. So I do want to encourage people next year, if you're interested in learning about some of the historic characters of our, of our homes in the city, to check out their Home and Garden Tour is something fun to do. Lastly, before I go completely over schedule, want to remind folks again, I want to thank the Police Department for the Ward 1 crime meeting that happens. I was able to participate virtually. I know Councilmember Fulcher was there in person. Thank the Police Department for, for working with our residents in Ward 1. Also, I will be attending Juneteenth, so I'm super excited about the ability to participate in that event. And so with that, I'm going to turn things over to our city.
Mayor, excuse me. I hate to interrupt, but get a second shot.
You can, you can get a do-over.
I'd like to blame it on age maybe tonight, that I said that was the greatest news from Ward 4, but it really isn't because the mayor reminds me that the Azalea Awards recognized two Ward 4 residents this year. Yulime O'Seals, who has been a longtime resident in Ward 4, she said it's not so long, but it was just from the, I think she said the 60s, but she's been a faithful volunteer working in Ward 4 to serve food at many of the functions that we put on, shows up at the voting night to bring food and to encourage people to vote for the right candidates, and many other activities. So I want to congratulate her on her Azalea Award. And also Tim Cooper, who is the lead organizer of the Juneteenth Celebration this year. He also was born here in, in Ward 4 and has decided to start a new nonprofit organization here called the Maple Community Association that is organizing the, the Juneteenth Celebration, and this is not just the Juneteenth Celebration, but it's, it's also the First Annual Juneteenth Celebration. And NQ, and I can't remember the last name, also received a Azalea Award this year from Ward 4, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Siemens. And with that, I'll turn things over to City Manager Dispierto to provide City Manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, and our guests. Yes, just to build a little bit on, we're very proud to announce what is really the city's inaugural celebration of Juneteenth. It's hosted by the Maple Community Association and the city. Public is very welcomed and encouraged to attend. This will, of course, be next Wednesday, June 19th, and this is from noon to 6:00 PM. The location is the Tacoma Park Middle School, Lee Jordan Field, at 7611 Piney Branch Avenue. Music, food, fellowship, kids' games, sound by DJ Beasy, a lot of fun. Expect a good turnout, and we're very excited to be a part of this partnership. Of course, Juneteenth is a very, very important celebration, both in terms of educating, agitating, and further culturally meaningful, very culturally meaningful acknowledgement of a historical event in the Civil War, where the Union Army had gotten, I guess, the last, in Texas, and Galveston, the last. Slaves that were not informed that they were free were informed so by Union troops and two years after the Emancipation Proclamation, unfortunately, but once their freedom was won and this was announced to them, it was a, of course, a, a true marker for the entire community. So we are happy to, again, be a part of this. There's a rain date that is scheduled, should that be necessary, for June 22nd, or beyond that, June 23rd. So wanted to share that information with you. With respect to Public Works, it is an observed city holiday as well. The regular Wednesday collection will move to Thursday, June 20th, for trash, recycling, and food waste. This will affect all of Ward 4 and Ward 5 and a portion of Ward 1. From the Housing and Community Development Department, this Friday, June 14th, beginning at 7:30 PM in the auditorium here at the Community Center, the Tacoma Park Arts Series welcomes Jules Bland, an acoustic guitarist, singer-songwriter originally from Silver Spring. His music and lyrics evoke rich, soulful tones, and this is a free concert, but donations are accepted. Tacoma Park Arts call for performances. The Arts and Humanities Division is seeking submissions for future performances in the Tacoma Park Arts Series, which provides a performance venue in the Community Center Auditorium here, honorariums, extensive promotion, and a professional recording of the performance by the city TV crew. There is no submission, no submission fee, and applicants do not need to be Tacoma Park residents. Performances may include music, theater, dance, multimedia performances, and so on. The submission deadline is June 30th, and there's more information in an online application form and the city's website. From the city's, from the city library, Summer Quest has started. The library's summer reading program is independent and original, just like Tacoma Park. This year's theme is construction, and the game board takes readers into a series of reading prompts with artwork by Youth Services Librarian Dave Burbank. Come pick up your copy for your summer reader and for yourself. There will not be a session of Neighborhood Circle Time on June 18th, but it will resume weekly on June 25th. Yard Dramas, our popular outdoor storytelling program, has returned to the Crossroads Farmer's Market for the summer. The next event is on Wednesday, June 26th, from 10:30 AM to 12:30 PM. Also at the Crossroads Farmer's Market this summer, please join us for the Second Annual Book Giveaway on July 17th. The rain date is July 24th. We will give away over 250 books in English, Spanish, and bilingual for children and young adults. Stop by and grab a book to take home. If you're interested in volunteering at either of our programs at the Crossroads Farmer's Market, please contact us at library@tacoma park M D dot gov. From the Police Department, a reminder about the Police Department's First Annual Diaper Drive. The primary objective of the diaper drive is to alleviate the financial burden on our residents, thus enabling them to use their resources towards other essential needs. By providing access to diapers through community support, we can make a meaningful difference in the lives of those who require assistance in our community. The diaper collection runs through the end of June. A link to more information will be included in the posted City Manager comments tomorrow. Operation Chill will be in effect once again this summer, and if our officers catch your child in the act, they just might get a ticket, but not to worry, this is something good. Tacoma Park Police Department has partnered with 7-Eleven again this year for their Operation Chill program. So when they see a youngster doing something good, they can give them a ticket or coupon for a free small Slurpee. Appropriate offenses would include helping other, another person, deterring crime, practicing safety, such as wearing a helmet during bike riding, or even just having a pleasant conversation with an officer. So be on your best behavior this summer. Our officers will be patrolling parks, community events, and other areas around the city looking to hand out these free treats. And finally, from the City Manager's Office, a staff shout-out from our Recreation Department. John Webster from the Recreation Department has been very busy the last two weeks. Notably, he spearheaded the inaugural Recreation Department Adult Pickleball Tournament, featuring eight enthusiastic teams. Additionally, he and Patty Malin from the Housing and Community Development Department showcased their broadcasting talents during the thrilling softball championship game at Bell Ziegler Field this past Sunday. They offered insightful commentary on the league's history, teams, and engaging interviews with participants. Thank you to John for his tireless work providing sporting opportunities to the residents of Tacoma Park. That concludes my report this evening, and happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, City Manager Dispierto. And in the interest of time, just acknowledging that Councilmember Small will be joining us virtually, just so that our, our tech staff will know. I think we're going to move into our presentation, because I don't want, I'm sorry. We're going to move into our presentation this evening, and if folks will bear with me, we're going to forego a, a break until we get into the voting session. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Roz Grisby, our Planning Manager, to set up the discussion that we're going to have about results of Laurel Avenue Traffic Study.
Thank you, Mayor Sucey and Council. I'm Rosalind Grisby, Planning Manager for the city. Tonight, we have before us the traffic study for the potential closure of Laurel Avenue. I wanted to just put this a little bit in context. In 2020, in response to the whole world being shut down, council passed a resolution to close the northbound side of Laurel, specifically supporting, they named it, supporting small businesses and advancing public health by allowing the use of public and private space for outdoor seating, sales, and customer pickup. In the, later in 2020, they confirmed that again, and at the end of 2021, and council passed another resolution, confirming it and making it a, an ongoing closure that was would renew automatically every year until either council or the business association of the community decided to do that differently. With the decline of COVID cases and with the broader discussions about use of public space, staff recognized there was a lot of discussion about traffic and sought to see if we could get a traffic analysis to look at one important element, not the only, but one important element to provide a foundation for further discussions. We were fortunate to get a grant from the Maryland, I'm sorry, Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. We got a Transportation Land Use Connection Grant. It's a technical assistance, and it was very specifically about the, the data collection, the data analysis, and modeling of traffic to understand what the potential impact would be of a closure. Tool Design was the, was selected as the consultant for the study, and we intend that this provides a foundation. It is not the only or even the definitive information for a council decision, but it provides a foundation to continue the conversation. The scope of work for this grant really set the parameters for the study, and I want to call out three particular points. One, the scope of work established that the study would use the current situation with the northbound closure of Laurel as the starting point for a traffic analysis. The second is that the scope focused on the data. How many cars? Where are they coming from? Where are they going? How are they moving to and through Tacoma Park? And how to predict changes? And the third point that was written into the scope of work is that new developments, including those not yet built, but that we know are in the pipeline, were included in the study and the analysis. So with that, the presentation, tonight's presentation is the final requirement of the grant from MW COG, and I will turn it over to Hector Chang, who's the project lead from Tool Design, and, and his team, and I'll take it from here.
All right. All right. But my name is Hector Chang. I'm the, a project planner at Tool Design, we're a transportation, planning, and engineering firm based out of Silver Spring, Maryland, and I was the project manager for the Laurel Avenue Traffic Study. I wanted to acknowledge the other team members that were part of the team. There's me, there's also Jim Sebastian, a senior planner in our office. He was more of a strategic advisor. Emily Kaylee, who I believe is joining us online, she is a traffic engineer, and she was, she led the art traffic analysis for this project. Lastly, I want to acknowledge Barbara Moser, who was our former Director of Traffic Engineering, who was also very much involved in this project. who was our former Director of Traffic Engineering, who was also very much involved in this project. And in person here, we have Dan Goodman. He's a Planning Director for the Mid-Atlantic and also Taiwo, who is our summer intern. Dan, Jim, and I are all Tacoma Park residents. I actually happen to live in Ward III. I live on Eastern Avenue between Laurel and Walnut. So this project is kind of near and dear to my heart, and also I get to walk the study area literally every day. I want to talk a little bit about the study process. So all of you have the report, I'm assuming. You probably maybe read the executive summary that sort of summarizes our findings. But I wanted to walk you guys through the study process to kind of understand what we did in the study. You're also welcome to read the rest of the report, which documents that. But basically, we kind of narrowed it down to three steps. There's the data collection piece where we looked at existing conditions and where we think likely reroutes would happen. And then we modeled that together in our data analysis and forecasting section where we essentially compute the projected volumes and intersection level of service when, if, and when if the Laurel Avenue project went ahead. Then we focus our mitigation options in places where we saw adverse effects. And then we looked at short-term and long-term strategies for that. This was part of the scope of work that we received from the city of Tacoma Park. Within the data collection sort of section of the study, we looked at these sources of data for existing conditions. So there's the traffic counts that we did. You see on the right-hand side sort of the cameras and the tube counters that we set up all around the study area. We also looked at big data models. We specifically used this company called Replica. And basically, they collect cellphone and connected vehicle data to model essentially what people are doing, frankly, throughout the country, but we specifically focus on Washington DC and the DMV region. Lastly, we also got feedback from our stakeholder group, which included representatives from the District Department of Transportation, Maryland Department of Transportation, as well as the Police Department and DPW in Tacoma Park. Specifically, we were looking for traffic impact studies from them, as well as sort of the signal timing sheets, like what's currently happening with the signals and the field observations that they have from just literally being out and about in the study area. The study areas to the right-hand side of this slide, you can see sort of like the shaded dotted area. Essentially, it's comprised of 10 intersections where we did put those cameras up to look at turning movement counts, essentially counting how many cars, say, turn left, go straight, or turn right. Three general time periods in the AM peak, PM peak, and Sunday peak. We also looked at volumes and speeds for an entire week, for seven days, at three locations, essentially on Eastern Carroll and Laurel, right around the church. From that particular source of data, we basically could narrow down on where the peak happened on Laurel Avenue, as well as on the other streets. And we noticed that basically there's a very sharp peak in the AM peak hour. So as I go through these slides, you will see me refer a little bit more often back to the AM peak results because it's basically... If it works when the network is most stressed, it should work at other times when basically the network is less stressed. Just for a fact, Laurel Avenue sees around 1,500 cars on average on a single weekday. Just to show sort of the level of detail that we were able to collect from the cameras for the turning movement counts, you can see it in this image, and I'm not going to go through each bubble, of course. How many cars turn left or went straight at each intersection? We use these numbers to model the change where Laurel Avenue closed. From our big data, we were able to sort of tell where people were coming to and from to get to that block of Laurel Avenue. So if you imagine that block of Laurel as a lake, we could see sort of the rivers of traffic that fed into it and the rivers of traffic that flowed out of it. And we simplified this in this graphic where you can see essentially that the majority of the traffic flowing into that one particular block of Laurel Avenue comes from east of the junction, from Carroll, Ethan, and Philadelphia, primarily from Carroll, east of the junction. Then, once they get to that block of Laurel Avenue, you can see that almost 58%, so almost the majority of it, goes to Aspen Street. In particular, they're going to Aspen Street, the underpass under the metro rail at Aspen Street, and then they go to Georgia Avenue and Blair Avenue, Blair Road, sorry, essentially trying to get into downtown DC. You can also see 16% of people making a left essentially on Eastern Avenue, primarily to get to places also in DC using New Hampshire Avenue. One potential... Big data models can be a little bit unreliable at times, so we like to compare these with real-world measurements. So that's where we turn back to those turning movement counts. And from those turning movement counts, we can see that essentially 40 out of 200 vehicles in the morning peak hour make a left on Laurel Avenue to go on Eastern. So that's around 20%. And basically, seeing that 20% is pretty close to 16%, we're pretty confident in the validity of the big data model. Next, as part of the scope that Roz mentioned, we looked at nearby developments to try to account for the additional traffic that will be generated by these new developments. In particular, we looked at four developments that were with data provided by DDOT and the Office of Zoning. They're listed right here in the screen. In total, that's around 988 new dwelling units that will be built on the DC side. And using formulas that are pretty standardized in the industry, we calculated that would generate around 297 new vehicle trips in the morning. That's accounting for the fact that this area has high transit, like high-quality transit. So that's already factored in. Then we looked at how many of those vehicles would travel through our study area of Carroll, Carroll, Laurel, and Eastern, and we see that it'll probably be around 10% of vehicle trips, or 10% of those 297. This is coming from the Tacoma Metro Station Redevelopment Comprehensive Transportation Review. That is the document that that development submitted to DDOT, where they found, using a different model that looks at traffic more regionally, they saw that 10% of their traffic would travel through that area. So we applied that to all of the 300 trips that we would see in the area. Next, as part of that data collection piece, we looked at the reroute assumptions. So here's an example of Carroll Avenue to Aspen Street for all that traffic. So right now, they would be using Laurel Street. We basically made them turn left on Willow when we ran the model. And we did that for every single origin and destination pair that we looked at. This is... We chose these reroutes based on sort of like the distance and travel time, sort of like what's the next best route if you were to close that route. We also looked at Google Maps, Apple Maps. I spent a couple mornings just literally seeing what Google Maps would tell me as the best route if we didn't go on Laurel. We also consulted with city staff. We used local knowledge provided the Police Department and the stakeholder group. And then we used our engineering judgment to essentially come up with the different reroutes that would be factored in. The one thing that I wanted to mention is that the reroutes that we did essentially assumed that all traffic moving through the study area currently continues moving through the study area. So this doesn't include... This is essentially a conservative estimate. Everything that we present is a conservative estimate of the change in traffic. We would probably see, if you were to close this section of Laurel, some traffic just moving completely away from the study area using, as we already heard, most of the traffic is actually trying to get to downtown DC. So they would probably... Some people would probably end up using, say, Piney Branch or New Hampshire instead of going through Old Town to get to the destination. But we just assumed everyone would still go through Old Town in our analysis. So the results of our analysis are essentially summarized in this graphic that is available in the executive summary. I wanted to walk you through sort of the specific changes one by one. So on the traffic that's more or less heading towards that Aspen Street underpass for the metro, we see that there will be around a 40% overall increase in traffic in the morning peak compared to the existing volume. That being said, as you can see, the impact is very different from street to street. We are projecting that Willow Street will see 85 additional vehicles over their existing 145 vehicles per hour. So that is an increase of around 58%. So the 14% is kind of like for the general area between all those streets, but obviously, the impact will differ from street to street. Next, we looked at the streets in the Westmoreland neighborhood. And generally, basically, for traffic that was going to turn left on Laurel to go onto Eastern, they will probably use streets within the Westmoreland neighborhood to make that left. So we essentially project around a 20% overall increase in traffic in the AM peak on those streets. So currently, Walnut sees around 150 cars per hour in the morning peak. They will see an additional 30 vehicles that would reroute there. Next, we looked at something called a level of service. This is basically just a way to see what the total average delay is for vehicles moving through an intersection. You see the rating, it's kind of like a school grade, A to F. That being said, in an urban area, A, B, and C are really good. Having a D, E, or even an F is not necessarily bad. It just means more delay. For example, people in Manhattan would not expect to see A, B, and C anytime in the near future. But very much, this is sort of like a subjective... Like what is okay would be a little bit more up to interpretation for people who are living there or using it to commute. We essentially ran the numbers to see what the current level of service is. And as you can see, almost every single intersection is A, B, and C for AM, PM, and Sunday, with the exception of that one very tricky intersection of Carroll, Willow, and Eastern Avenue. So I will call that intersection two from now on. If Laurel Avenue were closed and you did no other changes to anything, like you just literally closed it, you would see that intersection drop to an F in the morning from a D, and then the rest would more or less remain the same, an E, level of service E in a PM, and an F on Sunday. You would see also changes in other intersections. For example, we see one of Carroll and Laurel where in the PM, it drops from C to D. And on Eastern and Walnut, it drops from C to D, both in the morning and then afternoon peaks. So we focus essentially our mitigation options on intersections two, three, and we also looked at nine. I won't necessarily address it in this presentation, but I can talk about it in the Q and A portion. For mitigation options, we looked at short-term and long-term. And the short-term option is basically just change the signal. That would be probably the easiest thing, and you could even probably do it right now. So for example, on intersection three, where currently cars generally turn right from Carroll to Carroll instead of... And some will go straight on Laurel. If you were to close Laurel Avenue, you could have a shorter westbound-only phase and then a longer-through phase to let cars start traveling on Carroll, continue through longer through the intersection. And then you would keep the existing all pedestrian phase, and that would improve the intersection level of service at that particular location. So we applied similar types of adjustments without... Essentially, you don't have to even change the signal much. You just change how they cycle through the different phases. We applied that through intersections one, two, and three. And essentially, this is kind of what you would get as far as changes to level of service. So actually, we see an improvement from the existing condition, particularly intersection two, where you would remain a D in the morning, even with additional traffic from the reroute. And then you would see an improvement in the afternoon from E to D, and an improvement on Sunday from F to E. Then we looked at a couple longer-term options, particularly again at that intersection number two, and mainly because we saw some potential conflicts with pedestrians and vehicles, both at the Willow Street crosswalk and also at the Breakthrough Montessori School, particularly during the morning peak hours when there's also a school drop-off happening right around the same time, 8 a.m. We looked at three options within the study. So first, we looked at a protected left-turn lane with a left-turn signal, a protected left-turn signal with a left-turn lane. So basically, the signal would be changed to give people driving on Carroll Street Avenue a left, and then at the same time, preventing pedestrians from crossing by putting in the... You know, giving them the stop sign. That would change the intersection level of service to D, E, and F. Then we looked at just restricting all left turns altogether at that intersection from Carroll Street onto Willow Street, and technically also from Carroll onto Eastern Avenue. And that would improve the intersection to D, to level of services, D, D, and E. In that case, cars traveling, wanting to turn left, would have to turn left at Maple Street and also... Or continue straight essentially onto Cedar and then getting to Blair or Piney Branch, which is ultimately where they went to end up. Lastly, we also looked at a roundabout option, a little bit more further along. And that would improve the intersection level of service to just A, because there's just no traffic lights. And generally, the flow of traffic is spread out enough that people will find a gap as they get to the roundabout. An example of a roundabout is right there. This is the one on Chilum Road, just down the street from the study area. This would be about the same size and features that you would see... You would want to see in a roundabout located in this particular area with transit use and, you know, big vehicles and whatnot. So all in all, the summary of our findings are that the closure of Laurel Avenue is feasible from a traffic operations perspective with a moderate impact. And when I say moderate impact, I mean specifically to the traffic capacity of the streets and the intersections. Obviously, I'm not making a comment on the quality of life issues. That would be something that council should consider. Particularly, the greatest impact would be on the AM peak hour as follows. Like I mentioned, 14% more vehicles overall on Willow, Maple, and Cedar Streets. And those streets would be variable, especially if you start looking at those longer-term options. Obviously, you would start shifting traffic from one street to the other. 20% more vehicles overall on Westmoreland Streets in the morning peak. When you look at sort of the counts that we collected, they are very much comparable to volume changes that were caused by the closure of northbound Laurel Avenue. It's just essentially the reverse. So cars that would be traveling on, say, Walnut Street north on the PM, would now basically... It will be a similar volume going south now on the AM. Lastly, as far as intersections go, we looked... The Carroll, Eastern, and Willow intersection is the most heavily impacted, but as we discussed, can be easily mitigated with signal timing changes that you could implement pretty soon, tomorrow, if you wanted, someone that walks there very often. And then further mitigation options are available as we discuss. So with that, that is the end of the presentation that I have. And I'm here to... Happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Great. Well, thank you so much for this presentation and really appreciate the thoroughness and also the fact that you all are Tacoma Park residents that deal with the area as well. So really appreciate it. Councilmember Gibson?
I guess the first question has to do with the scope of the project. And certainly with the time that we're allowing tonight, we won't exhaust the number of questions that either the council or the residents have. So is the company willing to answer questions that are emailed through our HCD office to you or an additional set of questions?
This would be something that we would probably have to discuss with city staff. This is, within our scope, the last thing that we are supposed to do. So if we needed to spend more time doing that, then we'd have to discuss that with city staff and figure out...
I definitely would recommend that. Like I said, there are a lot of questions that came up, and this is a lot of dense data here.
Yes.
And it needs to be... We need to have some additional clarification, and I think this is not adequate. One of the things... I'll just do two or three of these questions that I have since the time is limited. I am a little confused in the executive summary, and also you said at the end, projected vehicle volumes on neighborhood streets in the AM peak are comparable to the changes experienced in the PM peak when northbound Laurel Avenue was closed. So I wasn't aware that there's baseline pre-closure and post-closure data. So that's... So this, so that's, that's, this suggests to me that you had, that there was data there before Nor- uh, before this northbound was closed, and you're comparing that with when it was closed. I'm not a, could you tell me where that data is?
Yeah. I now see that maybe we should have chosen better words. Um, but basically, what we're really talking about is what's current, we, we don't have baseline volumes, actually, um, but what we do from before the closure.
Okay. This, that's an important distinction because that's one of the major concerns.
Of course. Um, but I do want to say that um, we do have the PM peak volumes, and those are within the report. And we do see, essentially, usually when you see a street um, in the AM and the PM peak, will generally be the same volume, um, you know, in, in the respective direction of, um, like what the peak direction is.
Right.
Um, or sometimes in the PM, sometimes even more, just because we're in a area with a post office and restaurants, you know, people are dropping, you know, picking up food and whatnot.
Okay.
Um, we do see, um, in the PM peak, uh, a higher level of uh, traffic in some of these uh, streets that you don't see in the mornings. So we assume, we, essentially, we reason that that's because currently northbound Laurel is closed, and that people using um, those streets are doing so because Laurel Avenue is closed on the northbound.
Okay. Let me ask another question. Um, again, this was on page twenty-five. It was determined to apply an overall growth factor of four percent throughout the study area to account for the new developments. And so a lot has, uh, continues to change in terms of development and traffic in our region since the October date that you uh, made the, the, the traffic counts. Um, but a lot is changing. So I have two questions. What degree of certainty would you give to that overall four percent figure, or to any of the figures in terms of uh, the, what might have changed? And related to that, the county, was the county executive's estimated sixty-five percent increase in traffic volume in the nearby streets Carroll and, and Maple Avenue associated with the recently passed minor master plan considered in your estimate?
Um, I'm not, I, I don't.
A ver- a fairly significant rezoning to uh, uh, proposal or plan was passed.
Right.
Which has been calculated, which would calculate a number of new units that will be uh, on, just off of Carroll where the hospital is, and also along Willow Avenue. Um, and, and the county executive estimated the traffic in, increase could be as high as sixty-five percent with those increase. I just wondered if you considered that in your estimates?
The minor master plan was not one of the documents that we considered within this. Um, the only documents that we consist, uh, considered for the nearby developments were essentially like approved nearby developments in the DC side, but we do have a documentation.
Just a, yeah, clarification, thank you. And then, I guess I'll just wrap up with, um, having to do with the seven days of data that was provided in October, how, how do we know that this is representative of the full year and the various patterns between seasons, uh, various conditions that, um, that take place, uh, and even since that date? But uh, one, one week in, in October, is that, can we, is, how mu- how mu- how much latitude does that uh, give us to know, uh, or how, how much uh, certainty or reliability is that of, for other, other, other seasons of the, of the year, other times of year?
Of course. That's a great question, actually. Um, so um, we did look at one week in October, and we tried to specifically pick dates that would not be influenced by, say, weather, or school closures, or anything of that sort, like, say Laurel Avenue being closed for another event. Um, ultimately, those days were, the weather was pretty nice, if I recall correctly. It was a little chilly, but it was still, like, there was no rain, for example, on those dates. Um, and ultimately, it is pretty standard practice to collect one week's worth of data and extrapolate from that, um, the volumes that would be expected on a street. We do have formulas, um, essentially to extract, to do that extrapolation. So collecting one week's of data, specifically avoiding sort of like these other potential confounding factors, um, is more or less the way that standard practice does.
With presumably with a limited budget. Well, I have other questions, but I will defer to other council members.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. And Councilmember Fulcher?
Um, just two, three quick questions. Um, the signal timing that you uh, recommended at the intersection of Laurel and Carroll, is, is that something you're recommending uh, under current traffic conditions? Or are you recommending that signal timing change uh, only if Laurel Avenue were to be closed?
Yeah, I believe the benefit would only happen if Laurel Avenue were, would, were closed.
And then I, I think it's more like a staff question. Uh, is that signal something that we're in charge of? Like, I don't know where the state highway administration, their purview ends, and ours begins on Carroll.
Yeah, that would be S H A.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. And then for the roundabout that you uh, made a recommendation for, um, is that a specific, specifically a one-lane roundabout? Or is that a, it, it looks like it's small, right, that area? So is that just for one lane, or is that for multiple lanes for that roundabout? Like, how specific in the rec- roundabout recommendation are you getting?
This is where I think if, uh, our colleague, my colleague Emily Kaylee's on the line. Emily, are you there?
Hi, ever, yeah, can you hear me?
Um, if she isn't able to speak, um, I will have.
It looks like she's trying to speak, so just wanna check.
Um, yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Um, yes, that roundabout we analyzed was for just a single-lane roundabout. Um, and yeah, used a similar program that lets us look at the volumes and put in the number of lanes, and that operations would be for just, yes, one lane. Um, and it would kind of fit in that intersection, um, generally.
Okay, and it seems like that roundabout could be beneficial now. Is that correct? Are you only looking at, because it's, it's already experiencing pretty high levels of traffic? Uh, is that?
Yes, I think we looked at it to mitigate some of that left-turning conflict, but I think nothing takes away from potential benefits now as well, so.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Hansak?
Thank you. Um, I'm just gonna ask a couple of very specific questions. Actually, let me, let me build on the one that Councilmember Fulcher just asked. Um, and so this may be for our colleague online. Um, in terms of roundabouts, and pardon my ignorance, that seems really compelling to me. I, I mean, watching that move all the way to an A, given current, the current status of, of traffic flow. However, I'm not familiar with um, the safety aspects of pedestrian crossings, and it's a very high-use area for pedestrians. Can you just speak a little bit to that, just for all of us to learn more?
Emily, would you like to take this one?
Uh, yeah, I can, yeah. There are several safety benefits, both for drivers and pedestrians, um, using a roundabout. Um, just one first tattoo on for drivers. Everyone is just merging at a roundabout, and so that removes essentially the very severe crashes we could see at a more traditional signalized intersection. We don't have left turns, things like that. Um, I think at this specific intersection, there are some concerns between left-turning vehicles and those crosswalks, so that's also a potentially very severe pedestrian crash, um, concern. Um, people can kind of move through, they may not be looking for that crosswalk, can get moving um, at higher speeds through the intersection. Whereas this roundabout, um, it does require drivers to yield at those crosswalks, but each of the um, crossings essentially can be designed, so it's just a single lane. Um, there's, you can see, and it's not up here now, but I have that slide up on my other screen. But yeah, here, there's sort of those islands in between the two directions of traffic. So a pedestrian can um, wait and cross just one lane at a time, which um, yeah, provides better yielding, better, safer crossings for them. And also, those crossings can also be made raised up, so that just kind of helps even more with the drivers yielding, um, to pedestrians at the, the crossings.
Thank you, that was, that's very helpful. Uh, and obviously, if we want to dig in where we can later, thank you so much. Um, so my other quick question is, and you may not know the answer. Do we have any idea how much travel time delay between any two points on some of our um, high, high bus use? Uh, for example, let's take Carroll Avenue. Um, I'm looking at the, the slide intersection, um, where, where we see, we see the lines on Carroll Avenue. Do we, you, you've, you've estimated how many seconds it adds for intersection delays? But overall, are, do, do you all have any, pardon me if that's deep in the report that I didn't see, anything about kind of how much more time it would add to your commute time? And I'm, I'm not, I'm honestly not as concerned about cars at this point as I am about, let's say, our buses that use Carroll regularly to get from some of our outlying areas, even in Tacoma, to the Tacoma Metro Station, for example, that's their main pathway. And so if we ended up making that quite congested, that would be of great concern to us, I think, as a city.
Um, yeah, I don't think, that's a great question. I don't think we, it could be buried in there. I don't think we reported that result specifically, but essentially, along a corridor like this, the travel time comes from just the free-flow speed. So if the bus is generally moving at twenty-five miles an hour, over whatever the distance is, um, then on top of that, we add in just this delay that's experienced at each of the signals. So um, we don't have that, but that is something that kind of can be computed from the analysis we've done already.
And you, that could also include um, the estimates of increased traffic flows that you're, you're estimating on some of those streets, too?
Um.
Or is that tricky, is that a tricky thing for modeling?
That, the models that we use, um, it primarily would just come from the intersection delay and not anything mid-block. But generally, the mid-block delays we might be seeing pretty much comes from those intersections filling back, so.
All right, thank you, thank you. We can, we can dig in later more on that. I just wanted to highlight that, thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Gibson, your light's still on, did you have a follow?
Okay. There's more time, I, I would have a couple more questions, there's two more.
We, um, you can go ahead and knock out your two, we are almost at time, and then I'll, I'll ask mine.
Right, okay. Um, uh, to, to page twenty-seven, you say to model, to model data outside of the study, study area use of regional traffic demand model would be needed, but it is outside the purview of the project. So many traffic scenarios that impact the study involve regional traffic network, networks. My question is, what would regional travel demand modeling do to help us gain more accuracy in your predictions, your forecasting?
Emily, do you also want to talk about regional traffic models?
Yep, so, yeah, from our data collection, you could see we had those ten study intersections. We know what's happening there. We have those volumes right in that more um, condensed study area. But a regional model, um, looks at kind of the whole network, the whole greater DC region, um, and how that Hector mentioned, kind of, we were being somewhat conservative with our assumption that all of those trips that are on Laurel today will continue on Laurel, continue in the study area if Laurel were closed. Um, so a regional model might be able to better estimate trips that would not come through Tacoma Park at all, and maybe would, um, yeah, bypass on some of the other arterial collector-type roads outside of, um, our, our study area that we looked at here.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understood that from, from the text. Uh, I was just wondering whether there were some other advantages or other things that, that could be learned, um, within, with, in terms of other, other uh, input points, other places going in that we hadn't thought, I mean, so.
I guess what, just sort of, um, what Emily said, I think the results of that would actually potentially decrease the amount of expected vehicles within the study area, because we already did a rather conservative assessment of assuming everyone's still coming through.
Yeah, okay, I understand. I, I just didn't, you know, when you, when you say regional travel demand modeling, I wasn't sure what that might.
Oh, yeah.
And, and in this particular case, I understand what you're saying, and it's conservative. Okay, one, one last question. Um, this goes to the point that, that Rick Weiss made earlier, one of the residents, um, that has that, you conclude that in some cases, twenty percent higher increases in traffic levels are tolerable. The question of subjectivity is not what I'm gonna get, get into. What's tolerable for you may not be for me. But the question is, to what extent, if any, does this study take into account the narrowness of the serpentine routes on residential, residential streets where cars come, uh, you know, there's parking on one side, where one car has to stop in order to get the other one to go past? To what degree, um, does that sort of eccentricities of our streets ha- ha- have you been able to take into account?
Um, so maybe another way to phrase that is, maybe, like, did we take into account sort of the, the carrying capacity of that street? Like, how many cars could it feasibly carry? Um, it seems to, based on our reroute scenario, it seems that all the streets would be able to carry that amount of traffic. Um, whether that is something that is amenable to the quality of life of people living there is a more subjective matter, but, you know, the, the streets could accommodate that.
That, that, that makes some sense, but it doesn't capture the delay and the congestion that, that would happen between point A and point B on a given, from one intersection to another intersection.
Hmm.
So.
Or like the, the existing travel time, and maybe like how much longer it might be.
How much longer it would take, and, and you know, what, what potential safety impacts? Now, this wasn't a part of your study, but it, it, it may actually impact, um, in addition to safety, it may impact the ti- the travel time in between, given the nature, that you have to slow down. You have to slow down to get one, you, you, you live near there, you know what Walnut looks like. You can't get two cars through there fast.
No, right.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. Well, um, one of the joys of going last is that people sometimes tackle your questions for you, which is good. Um, and I'm appreciative to Councilmember Hansak for bringing up the pedestrian safety issue around the roundabout. Um, because I like the idea of the roundabout especially, but I'm, I'm, I'm totally not seeing exactly how pedestrian safety works in that type of roundabout. Not just, um, more or less because of the types of businesses that are nearby and the access to them. Um, but I do like the idea of it being a possibility, and I appreciate you all for putting that forward. Um, in terms of the signal timing, I had the opportunity during Pride to test that in real time. Uh, where both, both sides of Laurel were closed. I had to walk up and I needed to cross the street, and that signal is off. Um, I, I, for a very long time before I was able to cross over to Pride. So I do, um, think that you all are right. The signal timing would need to be adjusted to be able to redirect truck, traffic. But even when we're thinking about some of the temporary events and things that we're doing right now, where we close both sides of Laurel, you know, occasionally, you can really see how that signal timing can make it challenging for pedestrians to be able to, to easily get across the street. Um, one question I have is about, like, the big data versus the counts. And I understand that we're doing this for the seven days, um, primarily because we need to be able to compare the two, right? Compare the counts, the, the real counts versus the projections that you have with the, the big data. And so one of the questions I have is, um, are there opportunities to be able to leverage some of the replicate data to be able to look at things like, um, differences in traffic flow based on, you know, these occasions when we do have event, like, natural experiments where we're closing both sides of Laurel? So like Pride, for example, was a natural experience, uh, experiment where we closed both sides, and it could potentially create an opportunity for us to see how traffic navigates, given that we closed both sides of Laurel, and we can kind of see how people are moving as a result of the event. Is, is the replica data, does the replica data align for that? Or is it only ideal when you have the opportunity to leverage the count data to kind of compare the, the accuracy of the big data?
Um, oh, Emily, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, I was gonna say, do, if I can answer that as well. Um, the replica data source that we used is kind of a model, like Hector mentioned, using cell phone data, um, a few different sources, and so it's still a model. It's still kind of theoretical, making predictions. There are some other big data sources that do similar things, but you can nail down actually two specific dates. Again, it's kind of delayed a few months, a couple of seasons, for instance. Um, Streetlight is one other big data provider. Streetlight is one other big data provider that you can actually go in, nail down those specific dates and see what happened in the past with that. For this project, we had access to the replica data. The Streetlight data source can be costly when you're just doing it for one small project like this, but it's out there if money is available, kind of for the license for that data source.
Great, thank you. And one last question. We, so on Laurel Avenue, we have our farmers markets on Sundays, and we see, you know, at least in some of the trend data, there's naturally going to be less traffic in the area on Sundays because people aren't commuting. But I was wondering to what extent things like the fact that, you know, there's a lot of pedestrian walking around on Sundays for the farmer's market in the area and the like, like are those certain things that we should take into consideration about how some of the natural things that we do actually have some impacts in terms of long-term traffic flow? So the more that we activate the space like we're doing right now, does that naturally ultimately start to train drivers to avoid certain aspects of the community on certain days? And did you all look at the metro data at all? I know that you looked at the actual plans from DC in terms of the housing creation that's happening around the metro, but also the possibility of eliminating parking and surface parking or applying parking restrictions at the metro lot? Because one of the things that made us a little hectic is the fact that Metro opened up parking at the metro, which means you kind of get more people that will park there because they can, which then creates that flow that you've seen in terms of Carroll and folks coming through and then driving through the area and then hitting the metro Monday through Friday. So is that something that you all took into consideration or just the projections that DC had in terms of the number of units, estimated number of parking spots that would be available with any kind of new housing creation? And that's what we took into account?
I would say the latter for that particular aspect. We only took into account the potential new developments or frankly, approved developments that will be coming into online.
Okay, and nothing for around the development of the metro?
Only as far as like the increase in traffic from the new units that are being proposed in that redevelopment. And we did not, as far as I know, as far as I can tell, we did not say account for a potential decrease in traffic from having no parking lot or a smaller parking lot, so.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Well, thank you so much. I'm not seeing any more lights. We really appreciate you all working with the city and definitely want to send our sincerest appreciation to MW COG and the grant funds. And I know that some of my colleagues want you to do more, but I want you to make sure that we're sticking to what is allowed in the grant. And we appreciate your thoughtfulness as we try to tackle this issue in our city.
It's been a pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So we're going to move into voting session, but do folks need a five-minute break before we? Okay, we're going to take, we'll reconvene at 10:10. I know. I know there's like three right back there eating snacks. Okay, I got one, two, three. Councilmember, Councilmember Small gives us four. Excellent. Okay, so we're going to move into our voting session for this evening. And first voting item is the second reading ordinance approving the FY 2024 budget amendment number four. Would someone like to move?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Fulter. Thank you, Councilmember Small, from a distance, still jumping in there to second. Just want to give staff an opportunity to acknowledge any adjustments that were made to the budget amendment. It seems to me that there was one point that was brought up by staff last week regarding the dividend contribution and the revenue increase of that dividend distribution as it compares to the reduction in the cable franchise fee. So would, just want to check to make sure that there is no questions about that adjustment that was made.
Yeah, I believe these are all called out in the staff report. We knew some of these were coming last week, and we've included them all here to the best of our ability. Are there any questions?
Not seeing any lights for questions. Okay, and would be because we're hybrid, can the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Fulter?
Yes.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanzak?
Aye.
Councilmember Small?
Aye.
Mayor Circe?
Aye.
Okay, the next item for the voting session this evening is a single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of three unmarked police fleet vehicles. Would someone like to move? Thank you, Councilmember Fulter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Small. Are there any points of discussion on this authorization? Just as a reminder for my colleagues, this was something that was voted on for approval within our FY 2024 budget.
I have some technical questions, but they wouldn't affect my vote. I can email them to, because I don't see the chief here, so I can email them to you guys and you can answer me. Thank you.
And these are just technical questions with no adjustments to the reading?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. All right. Given that there are no edits for this item, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Fulter?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Abstain.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanzak?
Aye.
Councilmember Small?
Aye.
Mayor Circe?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is a resolution authorizing submittal of the FY '25 National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund, or the NED grant application. I just want to triple-check with staff because we also have the single reading ordinance authorizing the use of the NED grant funds to assist with the tenant purchase of 7520 Maple Avenue. I do just want to confirm with staff that we don't need a little introductory discussion before we go ahead and vote on these two items.
There will be a staff presentation for both items.
Excellent.
Very short presentation.
Okay, wonderful. So I'll turn things over to our Housing Community Development staff to provide us with a briefing on the NED grants.
Hi, I'm Patty Mail. I'm the Grants Coordinator, and as you learned about an hour ago, John Webster's play-by-play announcer cohort for softball games on the weekend. Tonight, I'm here to make you aware of three grant applications that HCD is planning to submit later this month to the state's Department of Housing and Community Development, the National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund opportunities, which we call them NED grants. You may be familiar with some of those. So in general, we're here tonight to ask for your support for those three submissions. The NED grants provide funding for strategic investment in local housing and businesses to encourage healthy, sustainable communities, growing tax base and high quality of life. The NED grants are very specific to Prince George's and Montgomery County. They're about us, right? They're very localized to us. This year statewide, there is $19 million available for capital, a very small amount, 1.2 million for operating funds. And on their list of activities that they want to support with these grants are things that we are going to apply for specifically, like down payment assistance for homeowners, first-time home buyers in Tacoma Park, programs to improve existing residential and business properties, in our case, it's going to be a residential program, and the development of affordable housing. We have been very successful in the past getting NED grant funding. There's a list here of FY '22, '23, and '24 funds, funding awards that we have gotten. So you can see kind of the breadth of support for housing, the TOPLES we talked about before, Ten Opportunity to Purchase, helping with rehabbing the Richardson School of Music, multifamily building improvement fund. We had all the division managers in HCD got together to talk about, here are the projects that are important to us right now. And we had to narrow those down to decide what we were going to put forth to this program. So we looked at a couple of things. One is readiness. Is the time right for this? Are all the pieces in place to move forward should we get the grants? Do we have the capacity either internally or through partnerships or through matching funding? So are the pieces in place for success? And lastly, is the program aligned with what NED is looking for to fund? So we have three suggestions that we are moving forward with. The deadline is June 26th, so these are not completely fully developed proposals yet. They will be by June 25th, I'm sure of it. So the three that... So the three that we're moving forward with. Sanctuary at Tacoma Park, which is gonna support the development of 78, a 78-unit low-income senior housing apartment on New Hampshire Avenue. That's the site of Grace United Methodist Church. It'll be right behind the church. We are planning to request $250,000 to assist with that. We are updating our former homestretch program to be more realistic and more appropriate for the times and the, and the local economy and the housing market. This would be a first-time home buyer revolving loan fund to support low and moderate income home buyers. So they are allowed, they are able to purchase homes in Tacoma Park. And it would be a forgivable loan, so that the idea is over time, you would buy this house and you would stay there. You would become a member of this community. You wouldn't be flipping this house. The planned request there is $250,000 also. And lastly, a home maintenance assistance program that came out of code enforcement when a property has a notice of violation. So there's something that's, as a safety issue at a property and the homeowner can't afford to fix it themselves. Having this fund available will allow income-qualified homeowners to have the city assist with getting those repairs done and being managed through our code enforcement office. We're planning to request $150,000 on that. The council priorities that all of these address are advancing a community of belonging, community development for an improved and equitable quality of life. So again, all of these are the three proposals we're planning to submit in a couple of weeks for the June 26 deadline. And we would love your support for that submission. Any questions?
Thank you so much for this presentation. Councilmember Hanzak?
Thank you. This question might, might be for you, might be for Director Callier. Could you speak about some of the other projects that might have been considered and, and why, why you honed in on these three? I, I, I think you probably have a little heads up. I, I've been really keen to see the potential for the northern end of Tacoma that's located near the Arlo Station due to the timing right now and some of our, our small business areas. If you wouldn't mind just sharing some insights on what you're thinking in that regard, I'd appreciate it.
So the, we had a Flower Avenue Gateway Project in mind and in talking with both our, our colleagues with, you know, the business associations there and also with our colleagues at the state, that's very cross-jurisdictional. And it would make a lot more sense in that case for us not to be the lead on that one. So those were the some of the things, some of the things that we, we talked about inside. Are we the best lead for that? We have offered support. Should they wanna pursue that? But we, we're not appropriate for the lead because for that intersection, we're only one of those, those four corners.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, just a quick question on, on the second, the first time homeowner buying revolving loan fund. How, how does one, you know, what eligibility, how does one, who gets in or what are the basis? How do you decide? Because I'm guessing there might be a lot of interest in something like this.
We hope so. We hope so, that there will be. So the idea right now is two different levels of initial assistance from the city. $50,000 for someone who would qualify as, as moderate income based on a percentage of AMI and then $100,000 available to those who would qualify on the scale as low income. So they would be qualified income-wise first and then would move through that.
Within that, is there, it, it, any kind of first come, first served? In other words, if there were 10 people that qualified as low income, how does that work out?
Everyone, Ira Callier, Director of Housing Community Development. Good evening, mayor and members of council. Yeah, so first of all, just critic, critically to point out that that housing reserve, or that money would be matched by a housing reserve fund contribution, which was approved in the FY 25 budget as well. So we would have more than just $250,000 to spend. The way that homestretch has worked and probably the way that this program would work as well as it is, first come, first served, for lack of a better term, right? Someone finds a house, they get pre-qualified, and then they apply for this program as part of their down payment programming.
So they have to, to have applied for a specific house to, 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 to meet the eligibility?
Yeah, traditionally, you'd have to have a sale, a sale agreement of some kind to qualify.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes, these, all three of these are, are great. I have a couple of specific questions about the, the third one, just to round out the package here. So on the senior housing, low-income senior housing, the planned request is for $250,000 and I was wondering if you could comment a little, either of you could comment a little bit on what that would be for? Cause as opposed to just $250,000 for?
I'll take this one, just cause we chatted about this earlier. So, correct. So currently, so this is for a specific site project, right? So it's titled "The Sanctuary" in this application. As Patty mentioned, this is for the Grace United Methodist project. So this project still has a ways to go towards completion, right? But we would be applying for capital funds to support the pre-development activities, right? So obviously, there is still a lot of design work to go here, right? But the developer and property owner will be applying for Lytec credits shortly. And these funds would go towards kind of matching and subsidizing the project to make it financially feasible to allow them to continue doing the design work, doing all the rest of the work that we'll dig into during the development review process.
Okay, I would appreciate it if you could make that, that distinction, that this project is, is not yet in the development review. And so the details of it are not being blessed here by the fact that we are approving an application for a grant to help someone get Lytec funds. Can I limit it to that in, in the expl, in the written explanation? That would be helpful to, so that folks don't, who live in the neighborhood, don't get confused and think that this is further along than it really is.
Sure, we, we're happy to provide some clarity and an updated.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And a, a quick note on timing for these grants. The applications would go in at the end of June. Last year, we heard about our awards in December. And then by the time all the, the agreements are executed, it's, we're still, I think we just did the last one now. For the Richardson School was, we just had that, that grant agreement executed the last week. So it, it's about a year or a little less than a year out from when the funds would be available. So we try to time that also with how these programs work. We need a little time to, you know, further develop the homestretch program. And we have that if we put the application in now and then, you know, the funding would not be available for, for a while yet.
And quick question, are we gonna have a separate presentation on the Duval? Okay, so I'll hold my question. And I, I just want to say thank you very much because I think one of the things that I, I wanna make sure that members, oh, I see Councilmember Small, I see your hand. One of the things that I think is very important for our residents to understand is that we have to be proactive in order to be able to react when the opportunities present themselves. So in many cases, we're putting forward these proposals in the expectation that something will happen, especially as it relates to the TOPOL dollars. Like we're putting them in ahead of time in order to ensure that when these opportunities present themselves, we have the resources available to support them. And I think that the Duval project is one of them. I know that we had a resident that was asking about how we're spending taxpayer dollars. And like, well, you know, this is grant monies, right? It's, you know, of course, aspects of our housing reserve fund comes from our, our budgeting. But it's important that our staff are able to proactively seek out these grant dollars to better equip us to not have to use all of our coffers of taxpayer funds to support these really important initiatives, particularly as it relates to providing opportunities for affordable housing, given the highly expensive, extremely expensive, fast churn nature of our housing market, so. Definitely, thank you so much for, for that. Councilmember Small, I see your hand.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I have a, just a quick question about some of the reality of supporting a Lytec, uh, uh, application within the confines of Tacoma Park. Is there a disconnect between that and our rent control program?
Sure, thank you so much for the question. So if this project was funded by Lytec and had the associated deed restriction with it, that would be an exemption from our rent stabilization program, right? So as we've talked about previously, any building that has an active deed restriction through a federal affordable subsidy, state affordable subsidy, so on and so forth, is exempt from rent stabilization.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Small, did you have any other follow-up?
Nope.
All right. Awesome. Thank you so much. And so I think, trying to think through the best way to do this. Let's go ahead and vote on the resolution supporting the city's planned applications for the FY 2025 National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund. Would someone like to move?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Siemens.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Fulcher for seconding. Given that we're hybrid, could the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Fulcher?
Yes.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanzak?
Aye.
Councilmember Small?
Aye.
Mayor Circe?
Aye.
Okay. Now let's move to our last voting item, which is the single reading ordinance authorizing the use of NED grant funds to assist with the tenant purchase of 7520 Maple Avenue. So I'll turn this back over to our HCD staff that will walk through this, this item.
All right, thank you again, Mayor Circe, members of council, Ira Callier, Director of Housing Community Development. I'll just start out by giving a quick shout out to our housing manager, Devin McNally, who has been spearheading this project and would love to be here, or I would love for him to be here, to take credit for it at least, but is sick tonight. So stepping in for him and hopefully we'll, we'll do him proud. So very briefly, wanted to talk through this procurement item ordinance in front of you because I think it touches on a few various items that we've been talking about over the past year here that it felt like a really great opportunity to not just understand the ordinance for you, but talk through some of the realities that have led us to this point and, and impact on process in preparation for our July 1 broader housing policy presentation as well to council. Okay. So I'll start briefly by talking about the Tacoma Park Tenant Opportunity Purchase Law. I know we've talked about this a lot, but just to be explicit, this is a portion of the city code, specifically chapter 6.32, somewhat dense. But the moral of chapter 6.32 is that before the owner of a, any rental facility in the city executes a private sale of that rental facility, they first must give several parties an opportunity to purchase that rental property at the same price, same terms that kind of were accepted on the private market, right, accepted by a third party. So prior to the settlement of a third-party contract, the owner must notify and provide opportunity to purchase to either a tenant and/or tenant association, depending on the size of the property, the city of Tacoma Park, and then for certain properties where Montgomery County law governs as well, the county after offering to the city. And there's many different timelines, many different requirements within that chapter. We won't go into all the details, but I'll just point out that the, the timelines and requirements vary based on kind of the size of a property, right? So single-family rental facilities, facilities with two to six units, and then facilities like the one that we're discussing tonight, 7520 Maple, the Deauville, which are seven or more units. So the city's had a few recent successes with TOPOL that I wanted to highlight here because I think they showcase kind of the different ways that TOPOL can come into play in various opportunities and how it really impacts our housing preservation strategies and our housing production strategies here in the city. So we are all hopefully very familiar with these projects over the past years, but just to refresh everyone. 112 Lee Avenue, this is a 15-unit building that you see a photo of here. This building was a successful tenant purchase and then conversion into a limited equity cooperative. So the tenants of that property are now the owners of that property in a limited equity cooperative model. The first, I believe the first in the city, very exciting, supported through NED funds as well as aside. And then two other projects, 7402 Garland Avenue and 320 Lincoln Avenue. These were both smaller properties where the city actually acted upon our, our opportunity purchase. So the tenants passed on their opportunity, the city acted on our opportunity purchase, and then assigned those rights to affordable housing developers who were able to redevelop those properties into actually homeownership purchase opportunities. So through the, we were able to get two deeply affordable homeownership opportunities at 7402 Garland and one middle-market, I think, I believe it was 120 AMI at the end of the day, purchase at, at 320 Lincoln Avenue. So very exciting opportunities. So broadly speaking, with, with TOPOL, you know, TOPOL is a really great opportunity. It certainly comes with its challenges as well. And we often, I think, talk about TOPOL or think about TOPOL as being just an opportunity for a tenant or tenant association to buy their building and then own their building, right? And that's not really the only purpose of TOPOL when it comes to preventing displacement and preserving housing opportunity within the city. So I should have put this as opportunities then challenges, but we'll start with challenges, I suppose. So the challenges that exist within the TOPOL law and kind of utilizing TOPOL. First of all, and maybe most obviously, purchase price and financing of a project, right? Especially larger buildings like the one that we're discussing tonight, the Deauville, you know, over 100-unit property. These are quite expensive properties, right? We're talking seven, eight-figure purchase prices, which doesn't include the needed, as my second point here, often critical building repairs that are needed in buildings that are, you know, 60-plus years old. So often when you're thinking about purchasing a building of that scale, you're not just thinking about meeting the acquisition price, you're also thinking about how do we get that immediate funding for, you know, six to seven figures of immediate repairs that need to happen on a building? And how does a tenant association, or a tenant themselves, you know, finance that, right? How do they find the financiers to, to do that, right? And speaking to the experience on 112 Lee, a 15-unit building and the amount of different financing, nonprofit financing partners we needed to bring in to make that deal happen, you know, very, very challenging often. The other kind of challenge here, a necessary challenge, is the timeframe requirements that exist within TOPOL, right? So the code is quite clear in kind of the set timeframe that's allowed for each step of the process if a tenant, tenant association of the city is interested in acting on their TOPOL rights. And that's because, you know, for all intents and purposes, we're holding up a private deal, right? So we wanna be quite clear on the timeline and give predictability to folks. But that often means it's quite a fast turnaround for folks to get organized, understand their opportunities, understand the investments they're making. Within those challenges, obviously, there's some great opportunities. You know, the opportunity to do some really great tenant organizing in a building when a TOPOL opportunity comes up. The opportunity to create resident wealth building potentially. But also the opportunity for a tenant group to potentially assign their rights and extract concessions from kind of an identified developer or property owner partner, right? And those concessions could be things like lifetime tenancy agreements. They could be things like, you know, commitment to specific unit upgrades or specific building decision-making models that, you know, even if a tenant association isn't the ultimate owner of a property, by inserting themselves into the TOPOL process, they're able to extract those concessions, negotiate, be a part of the process when a sale is happening. All right. So this, this project specifically in the funds we're talking about tonight come from a prior NED grant that was on that slide earlier, which was funding we received last year, $500,000 for Tenant Opportunity Purchase Support Fund. I won't go into all the details here. All I'll say is that kind of that support fund allowed us to do two things. One, it allowed us to identify and pre-qualify and pay firms who, when a TOPOL opportunity emerged and a tenant group was interested, those firms could step in and do tenant organizing and tenant feasibility studies as to what the purchase price or what the, what a reasonable purchase and/or assignment of a property could look like. And the other thing it did was it gave us funds potentially, as in this instance, to support the actual acquisition of a project, right? So I'll just keep rolling on. So the property that we're talking about here tonight or that we're asking you to take some action on is the Deauville. This is 5720 Maple Avenue, just some quick facts here. Property was built in 1960. This building is currently a market rate building. So it is subject to rent stabilization, but it is not under any sort of other, you know, like we talked about, Lytec or deed restriction. It has a little over 100 units with a current median rent of a little, approximately $1,200 a month, an average household size of three, and again, an average household income of approximately 48% of area median income. So just to walk through kind of the timeline to date and the potential future timeline here with this process. timeline here with this process. So in February of this year, the tenants and the city received our notice letter that a sale agreement had been reached, a third-party sale agreement on this property had been reached. This triggered all of the TOPOL requirements that are in the code, but it also, because we had this TOPOL support fund, triggered the opportunity for the city to engage both Casa de Maryland and Mi Casa in tenant engagement and a feasibility analysis of the property. So they engaged in both the financial work, understanding what critical repairs are necessary on the property, understanding what financing structures might work for an eventual acquisition, but also doing the tenant organizing work, right? Helping tenants come together, understand what their opportunities were, understand what the association was actually interested in taking on here. That brings us to right now here, where the tenants have decided, excuse me, I shouldn't say the tenants, the tenant association has decided to kind of take action on their TOPOL rights. So they have a purchase and sale agreement to execute. That purchase and sale agreement requires good faith deposit that the city will be contributing if you pass this ordinance. So what that allows the association to do is it allows them to continue their due diligence period throughout July and August here, potentially either for their own purchase of the property or their own purchase of property as the tenant association, or for the assignment of those rights to an identified developer, right? So we put the deposit down here. If a deal goes through at the end of that period, awesome, that money goes towards that down payment purchase of the property. And if not, and the tenant association decides, hey, we can't afford this property, we can't find a partner who's willing to give us the concessions we want to purchase this property, you know, we would then get that good faith deposit back at the end of the day to invest in another future opportunity. So I ran through that because I know it's been a long night and it's a complicated process, but really happy to answer any questions about the project, about TOPOL, about the property, anything.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes, thank you. That was very helpful. Couple of questions. $55,000, is that what the good faith deposit is? Is that 10% of the good faith deposit? How did you get $55,000? Is that what's left after the $500,000?
No, 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 no. So $55,000 is the good faith deposit. It would allow the tenant association to act on the proposed purchase.
Okay, great. I think I heard you say that the tenants can buy the property and then maybe they might sell it?
So what I was speaking-
And that was certainly a question earlier tonight from the residents. So can you speak to what the tenant rights are once they, assuming this all goes through and they own the property? Thank you.
Sure. So what, what the TOPOL law allows is for both the tenant association or the city, if we act on our rights, to assign those rights, right? We could identify, like for example, we mentioned the Garland Avenue property that we went to the ribbon-cutting, right? So that property, the ultimate purchaser of that property and developer of that property was Habitat for Humanity Metro Maryland, right? The way that was accomplished was the city acted on our TOPOL rights. We then, prior to an actual purchase, we assigned those rights to Habitat. They purchased the property at those, at that level, right? And so, yes, that's kind of how, quite honestly, a lot of TOPOL cases can play out, right? And it's kind of how we, why we talk about, things are not just about a tenant purchase, they're about kind of what the tenants can do with that moment and what they can do to, you know, identify partners and assign that opportunity that they have as well.
And so they could, for example, turn to one of the nonprofit, pardon, one of the nonprofit groups that already is on Maple Avenue to, if they, if that, if that group was interested in acquiring the property and managing it, and then they would all still be renters. So what's the, what if anything is the restriction that it be for affordable housing? How does that play out? Because that's the ultimate point here. They're not going to-
Sure.
Sell it and go upscale to some, right? So, so tell us how that works.
Yeah. So there's, there's several portions that I'll speak to it as it maybe relates to this property instance the most. So, you know, first of all, the property, as I mentioned, is governed by our rent stabilization program, right? Regardless of who the owner is, these are rent, these are licensed units that would remain licensed after a sale and would be governed by their existing rent stabilization rents, right? So the rent is, the maximum rent is the maximum rent, right? What we, what I mentioned earlier was kind of about that extraction of concessions through this process, right? So affordability is about price, but it's also about a whole bunch of other things as well, right? And so the mayor might be familiar with a very similar kind of large property that we had in Ward Six. I was going to say several years ago, maybe more than several at this point, but where, you know, due to this process, tenants were able to extract lifetime tenancies for certain tenants, right? You know, so security from eviction, right, security from losing their lease, were able to extract unit upgrades or building upgrades as part of a purchase process, right? So it's a real opportunity for, if a tenant association doesn't want to purchase a building themselves or can't afford to purchase a building themselves, could identify another partner who might be interested in purchasing the building and be able to say, we'll assign our rights to you, but only if you do X, Y, and Z for us, right?
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. And then just one last quick question. I think you said this, but I didn't write it down. How many units in Deauville?
101 units.
Thank you.
And I just want to piggyback. Those concessions are binding. And the tenants, once they know what those concessions are, like, they will hold up those things over the landlord's head like you would never believe. Like, so, once those concessions are in place, they are in place. So it's a lot easier, too, to go back to the landlord if you have a case where maybe someone is being, should have a lifelong tenancy, but they're being evicted for whatever reason, like, nope, this person is a lifelong tenant, right? So it, it does have some teeth in a way that just promises of a developer that may come in that aren't necessarily documented and agreed upon would be. It's, it's a lot stricter than what you would naturally assume would happen.
And does the city, is the city a party to all of these negotiations, or is the supporter?
Certainly, we've been a part of these discussions. We are, we would not be a party to any sort of, we would not be acting on our rights in this, with these funds.
It truly is the tenants and the, and the future landlord. That's the contractual agreement, I'd say. Yeah. Councilmember Fulcher?
Super quick questions. One, all of the money being used in this came from an NED grant, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then when we applied for that NED grant, this is what we said we were going to use this money for.
Not for this specific property, but for these specific opportunities, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Small, did you have a question?
I certainly did.
Okay, perfect.
Ira, I have a question concerning the overall procedure of the mechanics of having a sale in line and then a opportunity for the tenants. How often do these scenarios include the tenants involved in the initial attempt at purchasing the building?
Can I ask you to, to kind of explain your, extrapolate on your question a little bit more?
Well, if, if the mechanics of this are that as soon as there is a third-party sale, that triggers our law in order to provide notice and the paperwork and mechanical aspects of the law to see if you could go back to the market and find a financier. It would seem to me like that is at least to some degree procedurally inefficient if the initial purchaser is in concert with the tenants. And so I was curious about if that is a component part of the transactions that you envision in the future, even if it's not with this sort of a funding mechanism. It just seems like there would be an opportunity for developers to get in line on the front end as opposed to triggering all of the other paperwork.
Sure. So there's no requirement for a tenant association or the city to act on their TOPOL rights, right? And, but honestly, most of the time, we don't. And so certainly, if an agreement was worked out, you know, prior to this opportunity, then the tenant association would not need to, you know, hold up a process here.
But I do, just to piggyback off of that point, I do think that this is one of the reasons why we've been doing so much advocacy with our, our tenants and making sure they understand their rights and making sure they understand what, what resources that are available to them if they find themselves in a situation where their unit or the home that they're renting is going up for sale, right? So I, I think a lot of this is, you know, we aren't, sometimes things move so fast and we aren't able to act because we don't have the monies in our coffers. Sometimes the tenants don't realize that that's, that they actually, that we have the TOPOL law and they can actually take, take advantage of it. So I think we're trying to, and I don't want to speak for staff, but I think we're trying to tackle this thing on both ends of the spectrum, making sure that we have enough resources available to act in a very ad hoc, random way, depending on what happens to come up, but then also trying to educate our tenants so that they're better prepared and know when to contact our office when they're facing something like their, their building or their unit is going up for sale. Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to Cindy's comment, asked question about whether is this necessarily affordable housing? And you responded by saying that it might also include these concessions, which may not necessarily be affordability, if I undercorrect. I mean, it could be-
Well, they don't need to, right?
They don't need to.
Like affordability is built there.
Right. So the cynical side of me, what says, what if the tenant association aren't really particularly interested in long-term tenancy? They'd like to make as much money as they could and go someplace else. So what's, what's to prevent that from happening?
Sure. I, so the question, sorry, I just want to make sure I understand the question. So the tenant association could act on their rights, purchase a property, and then sell those rights and leave, right?
Right.
Sure, yeah. And then we would have, those residents would have, you know, made a lot of money potentially, and we'd have new residents moving into those units potentially, right? So, yeah, these are trade-offs that all the, all tenants and tenant association need to weigh in these opportunities and need to decide what values they have and what values are important to them in these moments, right? And so, in a, in a big building like this, it's a little different, right? But in a, certainly in a smaller building, a two-to-six-unit building, a 15-unit building, those are really important considerations that, that these funds allow us to help organize tenants to have those discussions as well.
Right. Okay. Well, that's clear. So it does not necessarily lead to affordable housing, is what I was getting-
What governs the affordability of the units is rent stabilization, right? So the units are rental-licensed now. They would be rental-licensed regardless of who the future owner is, as long as they remain rental-
After that five-year period that it's sold, then?
No, they are units that are licensed.
They're already, they're already rent stabilized.
They're rent stabilized, but when, when-
They're not new construction, correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I think one of the things that I, I think is important as we're kind of talking through these housing issues is to, in my mind, compartmentalize the goals, because we have 25 of them, right? So there's one piece that's about affordability. There's another piece that is about preventing displacement, right? And, and I'm, I'm going to add another one in, in terms of empowerment. Growing up the way that I grew up, being able to cash out could actually change someone's life, right? So it, it could be that we're making sure that our tenants have choice and they understand what those choices are. And if they want to stay, we provide the opportunities for them to stay in their homes. If they see an opportunity that could better their families to move on into that next phase of their lives, that's okay, too. But we have different mechanisms in place to ensure that we're able to maintain affordability of our housing stock and that we're able to make some quality improvements to our housing stock. So I do think it's important that we're kind of thinking through all of these different buckets of things that we're trying to tackle as a city. And one particular project isn't necessarily going to do all of that, but it is important for us to consider that all of them are important. Councilmember Small, I see your hand.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to, to echo what you were saying and that with regard to the public policy aspects of this, this is like one of the most innovative things that we do. It is indicative of the way forward for any number of communities, and it is fine by me. And I would like to vote, please.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay. So we have a Single Reading Ordinance authorizing the execution of a good faith deposit in support of the Duval Tenant Association. Councilmember Small, was that a move?
It was.
Thank you, Councilmember Siemens, for seconding. Because we're hybrid with a clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fulcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanzak?
Yes.
Councilmember Small?
Aye.
Mayor Cersei?
Aye. All right. We're, we're cooking with grease a little bit. Ron, you know what? We just can't get enough of you. That's why we have you here till almost 11 o'clock. All right. So our next item for tonight is the Emergency Operations Plan.
I guess I'm live now.
Yeah.
All right. So every five years, the Federal Emergency Management Agency asks jurisdictions to update and renew their emergency operations plan and submit it up the chain to the federal government. So our emergency operations plan is basically a comprehensive, all-hazards guidance to give elected officials, city staff, and others guidance on their responsibilities in a, an emergency. Goes over some of the disaster declarations, talks about the different types of awards you can get in individual as well as public assistance, like we did with COVID and back in 2016 when we had the Snowmageddon, where we got money back. Having something on file with FEMA allows us to get disaster funds back from the federal government. In 2016, we got $52,000-plus dollars for Snowmageddon here in the city. With COVID, we were able to get over $93,000 back from the disaster declaration, $403,000 from the CARES Act, the stuff that wasn't covered by the disaster declaration. And then we got awarded more with ARPA money. So having, you know, something on file does make us eligible for those disaster funds and other monies. It also has several different annexes in it. One talking about training, damage assessment. Then we have something with severe weather, cold and heat. We will be expecting high temperatures probably the next two days and definitely into next week. I heard the county talking about their cooling center plan. We sort of mirror that by when we're open, our facilities are open, we allow people to come in. Our plan is just to make more seats available so that they can come in and cool off, use our water fountains. We also put out information to the public about the county facilities that are available and other options that people can use to go cool off. The emergency service functions basically outline the different departments, who's in charge of what, like Emergency Service Function 5 is emergency management. We have our own police department, so that covers Emergency Service Function 13. We do our own damage assessment. We do our own communications. We have our public work. So we have about eight of the different emergency service functions. The rest are covered by the county, like mass care, fire rescue. So it goes through several different sections. So it goes through several different sections. Page 10 basically gave some of the updates that were added into the plan. I've added pandemics and other health-related diseases as a specific threat to Tacoma Park. City facilities, when available, may be called upon in an emergency to act as a transition center. Basically having this building and the rec center available to county, to city residents when the county is still in the process of opening up a shelter, you know? By definition, we do not have the facilities to act as a shelter. I've added input in some of our recovery to, by the different types of council committees we have here, giving some input into the mitigation and the recovery process. I've added our severe weather. In the past, our contracts with the employees, we usually followed the OPM government closings. If they close, we close, but not all times that we need to close, because they look at the entire national capital region. Sometimes something that hits up in Frederick County and the other counties doesn't really affect us. So it's been changed where the city manager makes the decision, so we've outlined some guidance for the city manager to, you know, when's a good time to close, when not to. So those have been some additions that have been added into it. So the process I use is I wait for the county to spend all their money with their contractors to renew their plan. Then, once that gets approved, so theirs was approved by FEMA back in May, so they sent me a copy, I went through, made some adjustments to our plan, and then I sent it off to the senior leadership team for input, gave them a deadline, then I forwarded it on to the city clerk to send to you. So I definitely need signatures from the senior leader, leader, cedar, senior leadership team, and for resolution and from the city council to approve this plan, and then I will forward it on to the county, who will send it to the Maryland Department of Emergency Management, who will send it on to the federal government, and once approved, we're good for another five years. That's my plan.
But retirement first. Councilmember Dubala?
Yeah, thank you very much for this. And my question is, this is natural disasters?
It also covers some man-made disasters in there. It tries to be an all-hazards plan, you can't predict everything.
Sure.
There's the man-made, like, train derailment with some of the corrosive materials that could overturn by the college and seep down this way. There's petroleum trucks or cyber attacks.
So this is different from a lockdown plan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, well, I, I can't say that I've read it from cover to cover, but it's pretty comprehensive. One thing that, that just struck me, and maybe it's just not appropriate, but it occurred to me that in, in a disaster, all hands on deck are needed, and we have some pretty extensive and valuable civic organizations that, from churches to neighborhood groups, et cetera, I don't see them mentioned.
They come other, under other resources, like Red Cross, nonprofits, it's hard to list everybody.
Obviously.
You know, I've worked with Tacoma Presbyterian Church, they wanted to be a shelter, but the county doesn't recognize private buildings as a shelter, they want something they can control, because they bring in a lot of resources with Health and Human Services, a nurse, security, the Red Cross, you have to have, you know, facilities for food, for showers, places to bed people, so.
Yeah, just to, I just thought that there are times that you just need bodies to help doing something like delivering food, and that we have groups that are already doing that, but.
Yep. It's covered in a general way.
Okay.
There's a list that's available.
A list in with telephone numbers or emails, that's, that's all I was thinking about.
Yeah, so that's, that's all available.
Yeah, to that same point, I believe, and I know in the report, it refers to the importance of partnerships and the separate, that, you know, with respect to significant partners, that it envisions separate memorandum of understanding with established and, that would be established and maintained with those organizations.
Yes.
So, so they can, it can not only be documented, but encompass some of the scope of their services and, and formalize it a little bit more in the sense that I think you're, you're, you're getting at.
Like with the Arles Street explosion, we had a lot of donations donated down into the police lobby, and we were, worked with, you know, CASA as well as the Adventist Community Outreach and a couple other of the churches to take some of the excess that couldn't be used by the people there from the Arles.
Hi, hi, so one, one question, I guess kind of piggybacking off of where Councilmember Gibson left off, so, and forgive me, I am many years removed from reviewing all hazards plans, but it's my understanding that, you know, for these kinds of plans, you wouldn't include a bunch of different groups and contact information that is subject to change. And also, in certain, while you have a lot of folks that may want to volunteer and want to be on the ground, and different groups that want to be on the ground, in some cases, you need people to shelter in place.
Yes.
And it's not, while they may want to help, sometimes volunteers can actually make things harder. And so I do think that from the, as the city manager mentioned, you know, having, in our, in our, you know, repository, like knowing which groups, which organizations can do certain things, have access to certain things, such that if there is an incident and we need that type of support, we would kind of know who to call, but that, I just want to confirm that that's not necessarily what we would need to include in this particular type of document.
No, the way, you know, you want people who are vetted volunteers, you just don't want the person coming off the street. He has good intention, intentions, but you have no idea what the person's background is. So you look for people that are already working for the Salvation Army, the Red Cross. I let my counterparts at the county keep the major list of the co-ed, community-oriented action, whatever. So they keep the list up to date, they have a staff of 20, I am one. So I let them keep the list, and I just borrow the list from them when it needed.
Makes perfect sense. I see Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to either echo or reiterate this as a material necessity for the planning for the city, and to presuppose that the city has to do things outside the bounds of any sort of volunteer groups that might be infinitely interested in procuring time or opportunity of service or even funding. I wish we would stop adding or asking about that all the time when we are doing actual regular business, and if we need to vote on this, I'd like to do so.
This is a work session, so we're not voting.
Excellent.
Give you more time to look through it.
You get a little bit more time. All right, Councilmember Hansak.
Thanks, uh, thank you, Ron, for this. I appreciate the city staff having met with me a few days back to discuss some emergency things, so pardon me if, especially of all days, I'd like to provide some constructive, but some critique here that some concerns I have about the plan. I, I guess, and I, and I haven't gone cover to cover, but some of the things that stood out to me that I didn't see, and pardon me, if, if, maybe you can point me to it if it's in here. I'm not seeing anything about water and gas outages, does that appear in here? It didn't appear in the overall list of, that I, that I reviewed.
It probably comes under one of the emergency service functions that you probably didn't get copies of, because that's another long list of documents that I can send to the city clerk to send on.
Okay, I, those two just stood out because I know that.
It's hard to mention every type of disaster, so it's sort of a general guidance.
Okay, I, so, and, and I found as a general document, I think it's like, it, it seems like it's, it's functioning. I, I struggled with walking myself through at least four or five major incidents that I can think of that I've lived through in my 20 years here, both on a sort of micro level, but on a, on a larger level, too. I think of the three days when I had an infant and we had no power in the middle of the winter, and it was really quite terrifying, actually. Some people were very, very cold. I know I had a baby and I was having trouble keeping my baby warm. And, and there were, we were so desperate at that time that we had to extend extension cords through our backyard neighbor's home into their home where they had a generator, and it was dangerous. And I, and that's just one, you know, one incident, which was quite citywide. We had another big citywide electrical, excuse me, a derecho, the derecho was a really profound event in the heat of July. And again, I, I am sure had I been a council member, then I would have had a number of people who were very concerned about overheating, and, and the climate reports we've seen have talked about extreme temperatures that are coming at us, and I, and I expect this to be a very major consideration over the coming few years. And I, I guess what's not coming out at me yet, and I, you know, your successor will also have a chance to work on these, but is some more specifics on kind of what the chain would be in these circumstances, you know, I, I, and, and again, maybe it's in here, but like about, do we have, do we have some, some specific strategies that we can employ within the 72-hour period? For example, it talks about, but for three days, people are expected to be self-sufficient, but could we have as a city, or could we get from the county with some specifics, either generators or cooling units that could be employed to some of our large multifamily buildings, to their, to their community rooms, for example, things like that? I would be, I don't know if that's something that's already been gone through by your preparedness committee, but I am really eager to see some of those very concrete solutions that I know would have made some of the previous situations I have lived through better had we had those. And maybe, maybe it doesn't appear in a document like this, but I, I'm concerned about not seeing that kind of specificity in the doc.
So the way that would work is, as a city, we make a request to the county, the county makes a request to the state, the state makes a request to the federal government, the federal government and the state have supplies scattered all over the place, and if a major disaster, everybody's going to be fighting for the same resources.
That, that's actually exactly my concern.
I know that public works has some.
Is there anything that we have at all, or is it inefficient for us to have that kind of being on hand?
Public Works has some contractors, you know, it's, it's not cost-effective for the city to purchase large amounts of stuff like that for a disaster and have it sitting.
I mean, I think.
Do we have it for our, our, our main buildings?
Well, we have the generators.
For example, when we go off, and particularly, we've, we've talked about this a little bit, but like, I, I guess one of the, the big issues is weekend, so nighttime and weekends, when we don't typically have off-duty staff, when our libraries wouldn't typically be open, our public facilities wouldn't necessarily be open, do we have anything at all that's wraparound in those circumstances, and would that, would that be the kind of thing that would appear in this document?
I mean, I would encourage us just to pay attention to page 30 and 31, and I, that outlines, and definitely, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but that outlines some of the roles and responsibilities of our utility partners when we have incidents where things like gas and power outages exist. So I guess, you know, not to derail, but to what extent are we working, I know that, you know, Public Works, but to what extent are we working with our utility partners to ensure that when power goes out, or there's things like a large storm that kind of knocks power out, that they're actually doing the things that we have here in the plan for them to do?
Yeah, emergency service function number three, Public Works and Engineering, has in that part of the document the responsibilities and the cooperation with those particular departments, Pepco, Washington Spurbin Gas, Washington SS, WSSC, Washington Gas. So I'll get those documents to the city clerk to distribute. I was trying to spell-check and everything else when I sent the main body.
Yeah, no, no, no problem. And I, I recognize that these kinds of documents are designed to be the top tier, and definitely, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I remember, because I used to have to review these things, each ESF has like its own behemoth of things that you, you actually outline as part of that particular type of emergency, so.
Yeah, there's appendices.
Yeah, a lot of them. Yep.
Yeah, you just have the first 72 pages and a couple of the annexes, and there's another maybe 100 pages of stuff with the ESFs.
All right, well, thank you so much. I apologize for, for keeping you after 11 o'clock, but we really appreciate this work and, and definitely, again, congratulations on your retirement, I know you're not leaving tomorrow, but.
No, I was, I was able to have some quiet time to work on a bunch of other things to get close out before June 30th. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so our last work session item for tonight is to review the administrative regulation for facilities. Just as a reminder for colleagues, this particular reg was out for public comment, and now we're, we're back to talk about any adjustments that were made based on comments received.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. How long do I have? I think I have like a 30-minute presentation, okay, all right, apologies.
I have you down for 15 minutes, and if you could make it 10, that would be better.
Yeah, it should be five. It should be like, all this should be awesome.
Yeah, give him brief history. I'm here to present the findings of the administrative regs for use of public facilities. The regulation was initially established in 2011, it's been 13 years since it's been updated. In January, we started the process, meeting with council, getting some feedback on the document. We came back to council in March with feedback that we received from you guys and made those corrections. And since, the document has gone out for public input, and to date, we've received three, only three comments from the public. All three comments were about the same topic, and as a result, it is staff's recommendation that we change our stance on the topic and revert back to the 11 free rentals in lieu of the five that was recommended in the document that was presented in March. And that is actually on page five of 13, under rental fees and security, rental fees, security deposits and payment, in the second paragraph, those, that adjustment has been made.
Wow, I mean, you did it in two minutes, because that was the only thing I wanted to make sure of, in terms of the, because I know that that was something that we had heard about, and I was, and I saw it was 11 here, and I was just trying to make sure that, that folks weren't advocating for anything beyond what they had before. Everything that I saw seemed that people just wanted us to revert it back to the number of free rentals that we had previously, so.
It's amazing what a little gray hair will do, isn't it?
All right, are there any other comments, questions, or thoughts about this one? This was the only one I had, all right. All right, awesome. So this will come back to, well, actually, no, it does not come back. I will eventually remember this, once we're done with these administrative regs. So given that council doesn't have any additional comments or requests to see. So given that council doesn't have any additional comments or requests to see this, this one again, I'm just confirming with my colleagues, staff should be, will be free to move forward with finalizing this administrative reg.
Okay, and, and as the document states, it will become effective August 1st.
Excellent. Okay, perfect, well, seeing no more lights, we actually made it out before 11:30. All right, thank you all so much, we're calling to move to adjourn this meeting. All right, everybody, have a good night.